Welcome you all here to the Region 12 Board of Education meeting. Education meeting Monday, April 21. Susan, would you take the attendance, please?
Yes. Valerie Anderson.
I'm still here.
Tony Badini.
Mm-hmm.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Gregory Cava.
Here.
Michelle Bora.
Here.
Emily Hibbert.
Here.
James Herschfield.
Yes.
Kalila.
Here.
Jennifer Cody.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
I am here. Peter Tagley.
Here.
All our presidents.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who desires to move anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no one who can set agendas through, thank you. Board of Chair. I just wanted to say that I realize that a lot of effort is going in with regard to the referendum for the region on April 29th. A lot of effort on both sides of the question is going in and I think that's good. It's healthy, it's good, and I hope that we get a, speaking on behalf of the board, I hope we get a good turnout, a good vote, and information gathering, partly, to see where the region stands. So, proud of everybody that's worked hard for this. And also then want to remind everyone that on May 6th is our budget vote and the polls are open that day, from 12 to 8. So, just wanted to make those reminders. Alright, two presenters report?
Yes, you don't have any correspondence. I did, I handed out a grid. There are some people wanting in the audience. I'm trying to just give some factual information. There's been a lot of talk and we've gotten some phone calls at Central Office about an option that we had considered. And I just wanted to let everybody know and give you an enrollment update. If you look at 2014-15, we currently have the amount of students, they'll be 74 in Booth Free and 56 in Burnham. If you look and go across, what I did is gave four years of classes, the number of classes and the students in each class. So, you can see that if we did go with the K2 school at Booth Free and the 3.5 school at Burnham, in September, we would have three classes at Booth Free. We would have to lay off four teachers, which has not been in the plan at this point. So, that would be surprising to some of them. Burnham would have five classes. 2015-16, there will be three classes at Booth Free, one kindergarten, one first, one second. One class of third grade at Burnham, two fourth and one fifth. That would be four classes. We'd lose an additional teacher. 2016-17, we would have three classes at Booth Free. We would have four classes at Burnham. We'd have two fifth grades. And then in 2017-18, we would have one class in each school for each grade. So, we'd have three classes at Booth Free. We would have three classes at Burnham. We would lose another teacher. We would still have Washington Primary School open, so that does not include, that's not included in that option. This does have a couple of other details, for example, busing. Our busing would increase because we no longer, we currently do not have buses that go back and forth between Bridgewater and Roxbury. And instead of, or as an option, I guess, in 2017-18, the Board of Education is putting out that we would have a consolidated school. If we went with this option, we would still have three elementary schools and two of them would have three classes in each school. So, I just wanted people to understand the facts about this option, because I know people are getting a lot of questions. So, I think it's important that as a board, we understand the facts. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
So with the...
Dr. Catherine, may I?
Yes, Susan.
These are updated enrollment projections?
These were updated as of last Tuesday. No, yes, Tuesday, I work Tuesday.
Do you have updated enrollment projections for WPS?
No, because that option didn't include WPS. I can get you that. But WPS has a solid group of students of at least one full class in each grade. But we certainly can give you that information, but that was not part of the option.
One full, I'm sorry.
One full class in each grade.
With 20 students, 18 students.
Nothing smaller than 18.
Could you bring us those WPS figures or expand them to us? Because if this referendum fails, one of the other alternatives that's obviously out there is that you could close WPS and then restrict those students down to Booth and Burnham, having two full local elementary schools and retaining a school with each town.
Insanity. Well, I would just say to you, that was never an option discussed.
No, no, I'm talking about new, if this referendum fails, we're talking about looking at all new options.
Well, but what the point I want to make also is that if this, if that was an option, those schools would need to be renovated.
That's right.
Okay? And if you renovated both of those schools, you would be paying a lot more money than you would pay for a consolidated school on the Chappahag campus.
Well, this isn't the place to talk about the frozen cons.
Okay. This is just information. This is the meat of the facts.
Get the numbers for WPS.
I'll be happy to do that.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, Peter?
Just a question. You had mentioned blending classes.
Yes.
So, if this is, if the Board doesn't support something along these lines, you would go to blending the classes?
It would be, if, yes. We will have a K1 combined multi-age class at Burnham School in September.
I think it would be good maybe for the Board at one of our meetings, because we're not going to make a decision, I'm not sure when we would make a decision on this item. I don't know what people are thinking, what the administration's thinking, but let's presume we weren't going to look at this until next year. Therefore, we'd be faithful blending classes, I would presume.
Right, two classes.
Right. So, I guess we would, I guess it would be good to get some information on how that works.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the education agenda. Dr. Catherine?
Yes, we have tonight many students in the audience and Madame Adele, who went on a trip to Quebec. So, they're here to share their experiences and we're very happy that you're here.
Thank you. I have a technician to turn the projector on while I introduce one of you, of you coming up. Alright. Thank you. We wanted to do this for, the main reason was to thank you. Thank you, the Board, and thank all the administrators that we are lucky to have for supporting us and making it easy for us to go on a trip like this, which, you know, is a pretty big deal. We went to another country.
How many, how many went?
Crossed the border, we used passports. There were 19 Chappahag students plus my son.
Okay.
And so it was quite an adventure. I have to say, these 19 students were very adventurous. They were willing to go on this adventure, to live with host families. I think some people didn't sign up for that reason, but I think a lot of people did and they didn't regret it. So, we'd like to thank you. Also, we'd like to thank the American Legion, which provided a full scholarship, which was divided among several students. And we'd also like to thank the Connecticut Community Foundation, which provided us with the grant from the Priscilla E. Whitmore Fund. So, among all those things, we're hoping that next year we'll be able to provide even more scholarship opportunities, because I know there are a few people who weren't able to come and they probably didn't come out of the woodwork, but hopefully we'll be able to reach out to them next year as well. And it's really the students who would like to tell you about it and I'm very thrilled that they're willing to do so. And we've cleared up some seats if you want to come sit down. We can find seats. So, can I let you push the buttons? So, our trip was in February. We went, why did we go in February? I wonder if you could answer that, because the weather was so good. Somebody, why did we go in February?
There was a huge festival in Quebec and a lot of people go and it's a really big cultural kind of thing and a really great way to meet a lot of people and there was people from around the world who were there as well. So, it was a really great experience.
That was really the main reason for picking that time of year. It's also a lot easier to go in February, believe it or not, despite the weather, than in May, where there's all kinds of other things going on. But there we all are, behind you is the St. Lawrence River. We look like we're born, we're not. And the first, one of the first places we visited was Mamalasi Falls. Impressions about Mamalasi Falls before we showed them some more pictures? It was cold, yes.
It was cold.
Even colder? Yeah, especially near the water, it was absolutely freezing. It was so beautiful. So, I'll let you, so we have, actually, some of the students weren't able to come tonight. I'm glad we had such a wonderful turnout. Thank you very much all of you for coming. I know Marie's still traveling. Alex just happened, actually, Alex, this is something I couldn't just mention. We hosted an essay contest not too long ago and Alex journeyed to one for French Level 2 against all the other schools who participated here at Chappahag. So, we'll be going with her to the Avions Fancès on Saturday to get her monetary prize. So, that's Alex and then Lauren, who's sitting right there.
Where is Melissa?
Yes, that's pretty impressive. These are the tallest falls in North America. So, Niagara's wider, this is taller. So, we have Sebastian, Emily, who just spoke there, I'm sorry. Sarah is traveling, I still believe, with Sarah Cava. And Maddie, right here. I know, I saw you somewhere. Okay, Maddie. Normally you can see Quebec from there, but obviously we couldn't. Sean and Eric are here as well, the other ones wearing the nice Quebec shirts. That's my son Duncan. I don't know if James is here. I saw Zach. Where's Zach? There he is. So, those are our eighth graders. So, we had eighth grade through junior. There weren't any seniors this year. Then we have Logan and Jan. That's Olivia. And Sarah again, is out of the Quebec school that we made up. This is a set of roots from a tree that was like woven into a stone wall. I just thought it was just like a broom. Next, the old city. So, we'll see some different types of photo. We learned quite a bit about history. Clayton, thanks for coming. Clayton is right there, right after baseball. It's again along the St. Lawrence. There were people kayaking that day on the river. It was almost completely frozen over. They were practicing for the race. Anyone want to remember anything about history?
I know that they had, it can go back, there's those, the...
The cannons?
The cannons, yeah.
The cannon. Right?
And we had a tour guide and he was telling us that they, originally, when they built the city, they had all the cannons facing out towards that river, because all of the, whenever any other naval ships would try and come in, it would be, they'd have to end up right in front of where that river is and that's the only port they could come through and all the cannons were set up there. And they had, it was really interesting to learn about kind of how they, how the French came in, how Americans were involved, how all the kind of history behind the city. And it was really interesting too, because you could actually see, like the cannons were there, you could see exactly how these things were built and how it looked and it was really eye-opening.
I think we forget too, that Canada is part of the Commonwealth, the English Commonwealth. And, you know, here we are, speaking French, it feels French and it's part of the Canadian Commonwealth.
The phonetic that connects the old city to the new city. And it's, I don't know if we have a picture of the actual thing, but it's just a card.
The next one.
Oh, we do?
Well, you're in it. Next, they were outside the museum. There were these really awesome ice sculptures that were like hand carved. It was absolutely amazing. Now, we have Dana, who's here. Great. And then there's Alex and Lauren again. This is the first restaurant experience. Anyone want to comment on restaurants?
It was so lit, it was really good.
But it was okay? Very smart.
Sometimes you luck out with most families too.
Oh, yeah.
The building looks really old.
It was interesting, because there was a lot of kind of small archways and stuff through the different parts of the old city.
When we were walking through to get to the restaurant from the museum, there was actually kind of a block, because there's little narrow streets and they're all cobblestone and every single night, there's tons and tons of snow and they're trying to get all the snow out in time for all the cars come through and, you know, one car drives up and everything's, I mean, it's supposed to be two-way, but there's only one way, because there's so much snow and people are backing up and going through. I mean, it was...
She's going to accept the...
Yes.
So, like, all the street is blocked off.
Yeah.
And when they're driving with snow, there's... Do you feel like people stayed inside?
No.
Aren't there people in hot tubs?
Yeah, look at that picture.
This is the Museum of Civilization. They had a video game, like, special going on.
And they had all the interactive parts as well, which are great.
You could play through the ages. They had like the original arcade Pac-Man up until like Warcraft and Call of Duty. There's Eric. These are different cannons, this is like up there. Oh, we took a little tour. Do you remember the tour up on the top of the city? Was that fun?
No.
It's a little cold. You were here.
Yeah.
And there were stairs at one point to get up to this place and they were just like flat ice.
That's Chateau de Fortinac, which is a hotel. And there have been a lot of important international meetings there, but it's basically a hotel. We didn't stay, not this time.
It's cool to look at though.
Yeah. This was our guide.
It was remarkable how little he was wearing for...
Yeah. He obviously was used to the Canadian weather.
This is the Chateau de Fortinac here.
Is that all ice? That's the river. So, probably partly icy. What they do is when they do the canoe racing, they break the ice and they go, then they break the ice and go. Pretty exciting. I should say this now somewhere.
Since it connects to the sea, right? The tide goes in and out depending, so you can see the ice.
Right, oh yeah, the river changes direction.
Moving in different directions depending on, was it the season or was it just part of the...
I think it was the tide.
Yeah.
That's the restaurant from the outside. Sometimes students out of the two pictures and I have them too. This was a giant mural, right? Like painted around the side of the building, it was huge.
There was, in Quebec, there was a lot of initiative for the graffiti side, so they have a point where they have the highway, right?
Yeah.
And the supports for the highway all have prominent artists who have done murals up the side of each one as a way to promote like healthy graphics throughout the city.
It was really, I thought it was really interesting, because from American approach, you'd think, you know, people would be like, we need to get rid of this graffiti, but while we're driving by, our tour guide's like, "Look at the beautiful art." And it was, they're all very, all the Canadians were very friendly and kind of robust and they embraced every situation. It kind of was really interesting.
Now, carnival. This was a big holiday for which we chose to go in February. These giant ice sculptures. They had an international and a Canadian celebration contest going on. So, they get a big block of ice delivered and they have so and so much time to make something out of it.
Bonhomme.
Scotch. They had a contest, see who could get their picture taken with him first.
Madame Adele was at the front lawn.
I won. These are the people in the hot tub in like sub-zero weather. Wow. No one wanted to do it. That is Daniel Kotis.
I'm wearing my glasses, hold there.
This is what's called a beaver tail and it's like fried dough, maybe this long, covered in like whatever you order, like cheesecake bits, caramel, chocolate, bananas, anything, and it's delicious. And very messy.
I actually had one of those and this was probably one of the best parts of my trip. Not only because of this, but after I ordered one and I'm, I, this is my first year taking French and I've always been kind of unmoody about it, but I went on this trip and I ordered one completely in French and then a French family came up to me and they asked me in French, "What did you get? Do you like it?" And I was able to carry a full conversation.
Yeah.
I felt, it was just so good. I just felt so good and I ran up to Madame Adele and I was like, "I can't believe I just did that."
I just can't keep that as an adieu.
Because for some of us, we'd get the stuff that would fall all over us and then we'd slip on the ice. But it's still enjoyable.
I think that was you, Seb, right? I was once slipping it all over myself and then I went to tell them. This is Rob, Rob Zaline, as I call her, Rob one, another eighth grader. Yeah, that's some foreshadowing.
Oh, yeah.
So, Seb and I were in a group and we all wanted to go on the Ferris wheel. Well, actually, Seb and I wanted to go on the Ferris wheel and no one else did. So, they ditched us and we went by ourselves and waited in line for half an hour.
And it was cold at that.
That's us waiting in line. There was a cat sculpture, as I'm sure you remember, with... That's one of my favorite parts. There's only two ice hotels in the whole world, so this is a pretty special experience for all of us. And this year it was, what was it, Myth? And then they were sponsored by Disney, so they had rooms dedicated to the movie Crows when that came out.
Including an ice slide, right?
Yeah, an ice slide with the snowman.
And so it's exactly what it sounds like, it's a hotel without ice.
And people sleep here. Intentionally.
They have, in one of the rooms, they have the fireplace, but it's like really insulated. And you're like, "Oh, what?"
It's not even like fire. It's real fire, but the technology is to keep the heat inside, it's just for the light.
And all the lights have LEDs, right?
Yeah. Oh, inside the hotel, right?
Inside the hotel, so it didn't melt the ice. And they were talking about how it could be warmer inside the hotel than it was outside on certain days, because it has a constant temperature on the inside.
Oh. And this hotel has to be rebuilt from scratch every single year. They use chainsaws to carve these out.
Oh, and there was animal pelts on all the ice chairs.
Yep. Doesn't really make it any warmer. These are some of the different rooms that were each designed to have some sort of theme reflecting the idea of like mythological beings and creatures and things like that.
And each room was like from a different part of the world.
There's Easter Island heads. Putting metal earlier behind that bar. Yeah, and each of the ice blocks are made, they have zero oxygen in them whatsoever, so they're completely clear.
And the, for the bar, they had, the cups were blocks of ice with holes drilled in them, because even the glasses you drank out of were, not us, of course, but...
As if you weren't cold enough.
Actually, some of the kids, I know my cousin Clayton, he got a warm maple drink and they had some of that outside and it's, it was like liquid maple syrup and the Canadians, they were just drinking it and it was just so sugary.
Did you drink that in one of the ice things?
No, it was just a, just much of hot maple syrup.
Wow. Oh, so cute. And the chandelier.
The chandelier weighs 600 pounds.
Yeah. Hmm. Glad you remembered. I think this was, this was everyone's favorite, I'm pretty sure. It was a surprise, because I thought, yeah, it's a tubing station, how exciting can it be? But it turns out, it's a lot more fun to tube if there's a group of eight than if there's a group of two. And they wound up really getting to know each other through that activity.
I had it.
Oh, my God. What is it?
Like three times. Isn't that the best? I actually didn't like it that much. Like everyone kept telling me to get it and how much they loved it and I kept trying it and didn't like it.
There are also big rafts, sometimes you pull it out.
Yeah. And those rafts are like 12 people, right?
It was cold too.
It was the first day, I think, that we went on the rafting and we were all kind of a little bit tired, but we got psyched up to go rafting. We get there, it's a huge place and then at first, we were all kind of in separate groups, because we only know so many people, but because you go in groups to raft, you start to get to know everyone here. It was a really great way to kind of break the ice with people and get to meet them. And not only that, but some of the things, we didn't have enough people for, so we'd go with the other people at the place. And everyone was so welcoming and, you know, you have to, they read you directions and all the directions are in French and no one knows what they're saying. They're just like, you know, keep your hands in or whatever. I don't really know. They're all just kind of nodding.
That's the point where the raft malfunctions. And everyone's like, "Oh, gosh, what do we do?"
There are true bonds made through something downhill together.
Oh, there was also on the, there was Mount Everest.
Oh, like black diamond hills.
It's at the top of the hill and they decided, that's not tall enough, so they decided to make a man-made hill on top of it. So, you go down a non-snow hill, just plastic.
A word will drop.
You have to walk up the like metal stairs. Which are all ice. Small icy metal stairs with your raft.
Yeah, because in the summer, it's a water park, so they kind of covered all of the, like, all of the slides and stuff with snow. So, this one was like, you know, supposed to be like really scary, all but you're walking up these icy steps and then first you go down like icy plastic and then you hit snow.
Was there ever a time you were climbing and I thought that you thought maybe this was such a good idea? You're tired.
But then the people are already behind you and you can't go back.
This was one of the places we ate at that was like famous for making homemade maple syrup. So, like, everything had maple syrup on it and if it didn't, then you put it on, so...
There was like, like wheat pie and baked beans.
Tradition was that you put the taps in the trees and it takes a long time, so you'd invite everybody over to help you and then in the evening, you'd have a party meal. And then it turns out there's music.
And strange dancing puppet things.
Yeah. You'll get to try that. I think if you click on that one, there's a video. Let you just click on it and it's...
Basically, hot potato. But you get a lot dizzier. Oh, it's the, how do we call it?
They're like two by four. They're like two by fours with just snow on them and they just pour like fresh maple syrup on them so that it gets a little bit hard and then you use like...
Like a popsicle stick.
A lollipop and then just eat it.
That's Dan Kodes in the background. And this was, this was right after we had eaten all that maple syrup.
These dogs love to just randomly stop and pee and poop. Eyes are big. One of them would stop, the other five would keep going.
And then there were all of the dogs that they had.
Well, they were waiting to like go out and pull the sleds. They were like, what was it, a hundred?
And when you weren't dog sledding.
Over 140.
Were there like 200 of them?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, they have like 200 husky Malus in waiting.
And there was also snowshering, which wasn't quite as fun as the dog sledding.
These dogs do like to hang out. They get so excited when you come back after like sledding, they'll start barking and freaking out because they want to pull the sled next.
Who's house is this? Is that yours?
Yeah. Up and down the road, there's just that in front of every single house. And if I were to stand up next to it, it would be out of my reach. So it's pretty high.
So this is Nick and Clayton. Do you want to say anything about host family?
Our host family was friends with Emily's and Sarah's, so we kind of hung out. For Nick's birthday, they bought us a cake. We celebrated Nick's birthday.
We taught him some American games, which was kind of...
Yeah, Ninja. We taught him Ninja.
Lauren, Dana, anything? What I liked about the trip the most was when, like I went there, it forced me to start speaking French and interacting with people. So if I didn't go on the trip, then I wouldn't have gotten like to experience the language like as much as I could.
Alex, this is the family that took them to the hockey game.
Yeah, that was probably one of the highlights of my trip is when we went to a Canadian hockey game. Because, and all the signs and like the flashing lights were in French, so I learned some words.
Montreal Canadiens game?
I don't know.
That was me and Sarah's host family. It was really funny when the mom got angry at the kids. Instead of yelling at them, she would tickle them. Everyone was just, they were just so nice and welcoming. It was, it was really nice.
So this is my host family. I stayed with Maddie and Emily and they were probably like the nicest people we met on the entire trip. They had three little girls, Lorian, Juliette, and John. And we watched the opening to the Olympics with them. They're teaching us all the countries in French and we were teaching back to them in English. Because the cool thing about staying with the family is they didn't actually speak a lot of English themselves, so we were sort of teaching each other, but it also was kind of a really fun challenge to have to stay in a family that doesn't speak a lot of English and you like push yourself to, you know, get your point across when you're trying to converse with them.
And so there are three little girls and the youngest one didn't know any English. And so in the morning, the mom would send her up to wake us up and then she would just sit with us on the bed, rambling on these French because she's like four. So even if it was English, you only understand half of it, but it's in a different language. So it was really funny because you'd like catch half of it and just hope when you said yes, it would be a yes or no question.
And she loved your webcam too.
Oh yeah, my computer, like on the Chromebooks with the camera, I have like 100 pictures of them. They loved it and all the different like filters and stuff. And they just sat there in the morning and just taking tons of pictures.
This was Muggan Danai and we were staying with a family with three boys around our age. I think there was one younger than us, seven, two our age and older. And it was, it was really nice that, it was a bit difficult because they really wanted to try out their English for us, but it was definitely, we definitely traded back and forth trying to test out French and such. But the oldest one, it was great. The oldest one made sushi, like homemade sushi. So we lucked out in food.
I'm explaining this one. We went on these big, it was like a toboggan, right? We got to the bottom and we're kind of waiting for everyone to group together and I go inside and I see this thing and I'm not sure if it, I thought it was a frozen banana, but I asked them and they say, "Oh, that's a waffle on a stick." And I say, "All right, I'll try one." It was so delicious. Every single person got a waffle on a stick. And we're all just sitting there eating the waffle and the steak and everyone was confused.
If you click on that one. One more video. Those are all the boys.
It was a bit of foul play though.
I think that was the last slide. So before I ask you for your final comments, students, I just want to say it was a real pleasure to take these students and every step of the way, I had adults complimenting me on how great these students were. Unfortunately, you know, it's not really me, it's their parents who raised them, but right up to the end, the very last night, I don't know where we were, somewhere in Massachusetts, the bus driver got a compliment from an elderly couple about how well behaved we were in Wendy's. You know, every step of the way, we got compliments from these kids. It's really, it's a great... So do you have any last minute things to say, students, or do you have any questions for us?
I'd like to see if you don't mind guys raising your hands, people wanting...
A pretty good turnout here.
Yeah, it was a great turnout.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
For sharing. Mrs. Judd is going to present the vision and mission. I think she's here. Oh, okay.
All right, Mrs. Judd, are you ready? Vision, mission, Emily Judd, 5.2.
Hi, everyone. The last time I was here was in January and at that time I shared with you a draft of the vision and mission work that the district has been doing. Since then, the staff has had another look at it and parents have had another look at it as well. So all of their input has now been put into a semifinal draft for your review tonight. The images that you see, the photography, was done by Dylan Fairbear from the high school and they would come with more clarity because this wasn't printed using Photoshop. Have any questions?
Parallel sentences.
Excuse me?
Very good parallel sentences.
Well, I don't know if anyone wants to take any action. She's asking for action, but certainly anyone who wants to make a motion, I think we should.
Do you need a motion to accept?
I don't need anything. If you want to make a motion, go ahead.
Well?
Yes, if you want to have an...
Thank you.
If you want to accept it, you need a motion.
That we approve and adopt this mission statement for Region 12?
Second, I'm sorry. Move to second. I'm moving to second of this dragon discussion.
I believe it's perseverance. I know, they become part of the walking... Do you need a comma before an "and"? Well, there are two up in the, up in the top. To become passionate, creative, and courageous. Do you need a comma?
It's a dependent clause, so you don't need a comma.
Exactly. And then empowered by knowledge, character, comma, and perseverance. So you don't need that second one. Okay, so...
Only one if it needs a dependent clause.
Get rid of that.
I get to do that a lot every year until I learn it.
Thank you very much. We need all eyes on it.
So important.
One, one question, because you probably had this conversation. The word inspire, because I could see how, I mean, you're saying we will do this, we will educate and I could see that that's a definite. And challenge, that's a definite. But inspire, I'm just wondering, that seems to be so individual as a word choice and, you know, some students may be inspired, some may not be inspired. And I don't, I'm just wondering if you had a conversation about that.
I think it was a word that most people felt strongly about and I think it was more a call to all of us to step up and make sure that we're doing all that we can to help students feel that.
That might lead to that.
Yeah. So I feel like that was a calling on our part to say it's important to recognize that that's part of our work.
Yeah.
You prefer coerced?
That was never discussed. I just want, never an option. It's not... I really thought it, I've looked at it gazillion times.
It's correct. It's correct.
Is it correct because I...
There's no R, second R. P-E-R-S-E, V-E-R-A-N-C-E.
Okay, that's Chris Sudworth.
Steadfastness in doing something despite difficulty or delay in achieving success. His perseverance with the technique is single-mindedness. So it is correct.
Okay, that's okay.
Anything else? Do you move to second?
I like it a lot and I just wanted to have you remind me again, this is a committee of parents, student, who worked on it?
Oh gosh, it was such...
Not like who specifically.
It was such a long process. It started out last year in June with the staff generating ideas and from that work, it went to the administrators to be shaped into some kind of form. Then it went back to the educational leaders in the district, then to the parents, back to staff, to you, and then again back to staff and now back to you. So it's gone through a lot of waves of people looking at it and giving feedback and input. So that's the process.
I just want to say I appreciate that because I know that can be difficult, but I also think that it helps create ownership and buy-in from all of the parties involved. So I know that that's a long, cumbersome process and something that can be very nebulous, but I think the product is great and the fact that so many people were involved will make it even better.
And I do want to just comment that this really wasn't done. It was done very carefully with so many people and so many people helping. I mean, the administrators took a lead in this, our educational leaders did as well in our buildings and the parents were extremely thoughtful in reflecting on all of this. So it was really a very thoughtful process, I believe, from my perspective.
All of the favor of approving this document as the vision and mission statement of Region 12, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right, 5.3. Information regarding upcoming referendum with question and answer session.
Yes. Our four guests will have a seat. Again, I think it's been a long time since the public hearings. It's been a long time since the architects have been here and long-range planning. And as I said, we are getting a lot of questions at Central Office about things that are receiving in the mail, papers, et cetera, et cetera. And I just felt it would be a good idea with our referendum next week to have, invite people here to just give a little two or three minute summary of their expert area and then if there are any questions that the board may have. So I'm going to pass it over to Bettina, who as you all know is our project manager.
Thank you. So what we thought we'd do tonight was try and address questions or in a, and just update you in a sequential order of the process. Starting out with the design and the merits and really the benefits of the new school and the benefits to the repairs to this school, for Angela. And then Anthony would talk about the cost of those projects, of the projects and the long-term cost to the communities. And then we have Barry here from Webster Bank, who's going to talk about really the bonds and the market conditions to address any questions there. And then I will discuss the next steps moving forward if this project does pass referendum and what the next steps are for both this school and the elementary school, because there's a fair amount of work still in front of us with the June 3 deadline, if this does pass. So I'm going to turn this over to Angela.
Great, thank you. Just in terms of summarizing the benefits from a designer's perspective of the consolidated school, you know, first and foremost in my mind, you design professionals are charged with making sure that all buildings are, maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants. And, you know, in our minds at the firm, you know, we believe that a new building is much more beneficial in that it'll comply with all current, you know, fire and building codes, as well as your state educational code requirements, not to mention accessibility for persons with disabilities. Now certainly your existing facilities are certainly compliant, but they're grandfathered and certainly a new building would be able to comply with all current codes, which are much stricter. Secondly, I think one of the biggest benefits here is the energy savings and the efficiency that you'll receive from a single building. You'll have a single... You'll have a single main equipment room and a single set of main equipment. You'll have very high-efficiency boilers and other main pieces of equipment, as well as your systems will be controlled by a state-of-the-art addressable control system, and therefore, you know, bringing down your operating costs significantly, not to mention the lighting and evaluation of all your electrical loads, which is a significant part of your operating costs. So from an engineering perspective, the folks in our firm are certainly, you know, looking to that as a much better solution than what you're living with now. Along the lines of efficiency, there's also efficiency of just the square footage that you need to maintain. You've got a single building rather than the multiple buildings, and in terms of your maintenance staff, both interior and exterior, and the amount of materials and supplies and staff you need and hours to maintain the buildings is much less, not to mention the things that teachers struggle with every day, such as audiovisual equipment, communication systems, the numbers of telephones, and media equipment, and so forth, just in terms of trying to manage all of those items and keep them in stock and upgrade them, technology, computers, et cetera, much more efficient in terms of costs. And I think, you know, we can't forget, obviously, that the building is designed to exactly house your curriculum. You know, you've got some nice elementary schools that are producing wonderful output of students and their grades, but over time, you know, older buildings are retrofitted, you know, classrooms and other spaces are sort of put into spaces that weren't originally designed for that purpose. You know, this new building will have an actual media center, rather than three, you know, sort of areas that are media centers. There'll be a place for all the activities that are required by your educational curriculum. The classrooms will be proper classrooms with the acoustics that are required by state standards. And of course, the outdoor accommodations, there'll be facilities for outdoor learning and respect of the environment and outdoor curriculum. A couple other points, the facility will be designed for between 20 and 50 years. Materials will be very durable and maintenance-free. That longevity will certainly help you out. Although your buildings might be in good condition now, there will be projects coming up with those buildings that'll need to happen soon. And as the design has been cited on the campus here, it is expandable, so that's another benefit, whereas you don't have that capability, we don't believe, with the other sites that you have. And I think one thing that might, you know, prospective families to the area might actually look for, as I know they're looking all over the state, is your security that you have in your new building. You know, we can certainly retrofit old buildings to, you know, have modern security systems, but when you're able to design a building with a proper visibility from the main office, the proper entrance vestibules and access controls and sightlines and cameras, the proper separation between cars and buses and walkers, you know, you really feel much better about not just a security from intruders, but just a safer environment. And then finally, I think the other thing that will probably really speak to families in the area, whether they live here now or potential new families, is the indoor environment. I feel strongly, as I know I've spoken to you in the past, about a healthy indoor environment, an indoor environment that's free of mold and particulates, an indoor environment that has carbon dioxide sensors, so you know that the ventilation will kick in when it needs to, and the kids won't get tired. You know, the natural light and the benefits of the views from every classroom really will help the mental and physical health of both the staff and the students. So that's really the finer points, I think, of how we feel, and also specifically about this project going through the design process. Those are the benefits that we see the most.
All right, thank you. Is there another?
The point you made about security is something that I think is just kind of sometimes second or third in consideration. And to me, that is number one, just number one, to have a secure campus, a separate campus, a campus that we know all the entrances and exits, and we see who's coming in and who isn't. To me, that is the number-one selling point, especially, I mean, obviously, we have to do something because of the population decline and the need for efficiencies. But if I was a parent with a young child, I would demand security. And I know that while we do the best we can with our present buildings, they, you know, it's hard to retrofit, as you said, and to build now, knowing what we know, brings it to an exquisite level.
This particular site has the benefits of having that gateway at the bottom of the hill, which is amazing. I mean, you can have your glass laminated, you can have cameras, you know, and so forth. But there really are some particular benefits to this particular site, because what you're trying to do is get that early warning, early notification, and then slow down the intruder. So I don't disagree with you. I mean, anyone in this room could put any of the items I listed as number one. They are all important, both financially and for the health and safety of the occupants of the building.
And on another level too, is the fact of, and I was just, when we moved here a while back, and I have young children in the system, I was really disappointed that a community as smart and frankly as well off as we are cannot afford a hot lunch program for children. I mean, it gets cold. Wouldn't it be great to have soup during the cold months? Wouldn't it be great to have breakfast for some children because they really need it? It's just an absurdity, an absurdity. I had hot lunch 500 years ago in a little school in California, and we don't do that. And that's just crazy.
Yeah, back to the operating costs. I mean, there's a benefit there. You may not have three hot lunches in three schools, but there's an opportunity where you've got one kitchen and you're able to do it. That would be an interesting comparison to make, is the operating cost of a warming kitchen that will serve this entire population versus what the expenditures are now.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's, we'll move on to presentations. Now, Angela, why are you telling us all this now?
I'm just summarizing the benefits.
But we've all, as a board, we've voted as a majority to put this to referendum, which has already been set.
I've been asked to summarize the benefits tonight.
But we should, we know them because we've voted to put this to referendum.
I think it was also an opportunity to ask me questions, if you have any.
It's a presentation of the information that the boards amassed and is being presented as the referendum. I think Dr. President can speak to it. So it's for, how is it for our benefit?
Well, it's not only for the board's benefit, it's for the audience's benefit. There's a lot of misinformation out there. People have been contacting our office, there were mailings sent to towns, and people and board members have asked me to put the factual information out there. I think when you have a referendum in a week, that it is appropriate to have the experts who you have hired to put a referendum to the people to vote, to share the facts, to sharing the factual information, and I think it's important.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, just on that, and also, we're being asked to approve this, so it's good for us to refresh our memory before we approve a mailing. And I have one more question, if I might. What degree?
Of course.
What degree of LEED certification might this be, or are we seeking any level of certification?
So the state of Connecticut requires that all new facilities of this size and purpose and reimbursement from the state be equivalent to a LEED Silver status. So it doesn't have to be registered with the Green Building Council. The state of Connecticut actually drafted their own version, so to speak, of the LEED Silver standard, so it will be very similar to that.
The reason why I ask that is while we were talking about a renovate to new for three elementary schools a while back, there were elements of how do we get those schools to LEED Silver, which would be, you know, amazingly expensive and frankly just not going to happen in at least two of those three schools. So it's good to know we're going to start with LEED, hopefully.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony?
Thank you.
So I've been asked, I've been asked to go through or review the financials and, again, answer questions. I've, there have been a number of questions given directly to me, either from board members or from the community, and there just seems to be an opportunity to just, again, level set what the numbers are. So the first page you see there is just the, the cost reduction was 97, over the 32-year period, was 97.9 million. It came from two areas, staffing to the total of 79.1 million, maintenance and operations at 18.8. And you could see the percent reduction in staffing levels and maintenance budgets. I wanted to point out a couple things as we go here. The staffing relative to, and the maintenance and ops, there have been some questions about whether or not custodial staff is included. It is. In fact, there's only one, there's a net reduction of one custodian in the consolidated environment, but that's reflected in the numbers. Also, in the maintenance ops, it does not include teachers, expenses, and supplies. That was another question. And on the bond, the principal plus interest is 50.8 million, of which 35.2 is principal and 15.6 is interest. Those numbers are a direct pull from Webster Bank, based on the schedules that were run. There was a question about the existing bonds. The existing bonds were included in the base budget, so they are in these numbers. So when you take the 97 from, or 50 from 97, the savings to the district over the 32 years is 47.1 million. So the second sheet is a commentary I prepared based on some information that's in the public domain regarding comments made about the financial analysis, some of which I touched right here. I won't go through this, I'll leave that for you to read, but I think it is important to understand what is literally in the analysis and what wasn't in the analysis. And I'll make the offer that I made the first time, Jim, when I came here, that I will sit with anybody and go through every cell of every spreadsheet, but to date, no one's taking me up on that offer.
Anthony, thank you.
I just want to be sure, Anthony, this category here, 50.8, says bond, principal, and interest?
Yep.
Do you mean that that's the construction project, including the bond, principal, and interest? So I, the bond principal means the construction project, interest means the interest, that's what that means, that's the project plus the financing.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yes, and that includes the new school, plus the repairs, renovations to the middle school, high school. So that's a total number.
Yes.
I have, it might be the nice man next to you, but I was at a senior center meeting, and I had someone tell me very adamantly that it was going to be more than $15 million in interest, that it could be $30 million in interest, and there was no way to know. So I need some clarification on that before tomorrow morning.
I'll say this, that the interest rates and the projections are fixed over the contract. It's a bond, but I'll let the bank answer the question.
All right, so thank you. My name is Barry Bernabi, I'm the district's financial advisor, and, you know, there's two general factors that determine what the interest cost is, the overall level of interest rates, which are near 60-year lows. So in fact, when we ran this analysis with Bob, rates are actually lower now than when we ran it. So do we know what rates are going to be if and when the district were to borrow? No, not really, but rates have been fairly low for a period of time. The other factor that determines your borrowing cost is your bond rating. The district is rated double A+, which is one notch from a triple A, which is the highest rating. So the district has a very high bond rating, interest rates are very low. So we were very conservative when we put these numbers together. Assuming that the bond was issued, at that point in time, the rate gets locked in for the next 20, 25, 30 years, whatever the term is of bond. So if rates were to go up to 10%, it wouldn't matter. It's locked in like a fixed-rate mortgage.
Like a mortgage.
Like a mortgage. Fixed rate.
Or credit card, that you get locked in at.
Right, the one that you get locked in. It's not locked in now, obviously, because.
But it would be if we did it.
Exactly.
And then it would not change, we would know that is the number.
Exactly.
End of story.
End of story.
You can make it $30 million. If you say it's 15 million, they can't make it 30 million.
Exactly. It's locked in, that's it. Doesn't matter if rates go up to 10%.
No, I understand it, I just need it to be true.
So just to recap that, we use a conservative, you know, we're making projections into the future. So if someone says your borrowing cost that you're using now, is that what the rate is going to be? No one knows that for sure until you actually do it. But once you do it, the rate is locked in.
Okay, thank you.
Do I, we have a double A-plus rating, so in other words, we have the same bond rating as the United States of America?
Yes, it is higher than the state of Connecticut, and same as the United States government.
Thank you.
And we can't get to the next level because we don't tax. If we could, we'd get to the next level.
Because a regional school district, it's hard to get to a triple A, because as Bob just said, you're dependent on the member towns, the revenue.
Speaking of member towns, I know it's a lot of debt for the three towns to look at, and some people have mentioned debt capacity. Obviously, for the three member towns to take on this, this is their debt. But can you address, say, debt capacity of, say, Washington, because they're taking on the largest portion of that? And it was my understanding through the Board of Finance, the debt capacity of the town of Washington is manif. I mean, I can't even peg a number, the grand list is a billion.
No, you're right, there are limits that the state imposes, but there's no community in the state of Connecticut that even gets close to those limits. So the real question is, is what is a community willing to pay in their budget to cover the debt service? As far as a legal capacity, we're not anywhere near the legal capacity based on the state limits.
So there's plenty of flexibility for all three member towns, in your experience, to take on whatever debt they need for roads, for infrastructure, separate from whatever the region is doing?
There is, there is a legal amount of capacity out there. The other factor is their willingness to assume that, and that's up to each town.
But no town has this kind of debt right now. So there's capacity.
There is definitely capacity.
So the $47 million savings is stretched over a 32-year period.
That's right.
So that's about a million and a half savings a year.
That's right.
I just wanted to, I had a question about the bond interest. You touched on this, but I just wanted to go back. You said there, at historic lows, how long have they been roughly? I mean, just sort of, can you give us a history without necessary specifics, but like, in the last 10 years, historic highs, how long ago?
Well, you know, since 1981, interest rates have been coming generally downward. You usually have a graph, I didn't bring it tonight, but it's been bouncing around. Since 1981, rates have come down. In 2012, they hit a 70-year low. They're up slightly from that low. But basically, from 2009 to today, rates have been in a relatively narrow range of around 3% for a borrowing cost for the district. So from, if the district issued these bonds in 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, or today, it's roughly around that same rate of around 3%. So if someone says, is it likely that's going to go up to 5% next month? I mean, it's possible, but it's unlikely. Everyone's been saying rates are going to go higher. There's an article in today's Wall Street Journal that a lot of these huge Wall Street firms, everyone thought this year was it, with the new chairman of the Federal Reserve, that rates were going to go up. They started to go up, and they came back down, and these Wall Street firms lost a lot of money. Long story short, no one knows what rates are going to be tomorrow, next month, next year. But short answer to your question, for the last five years, rates have been right around that 3% range. that three percent range.
But before that, just because, I mean, these are sort of unique historic economic times, let's say before two thousand eight, before two thousand nine, what kind of bond rates were we looking at before then?
It was slightly, it was slightly higher. Each year that you go back, it was about maybe a half a percentage point higher.
Okay, so we're not talking like eighteen percent?
Right, right.
Okay, I just, I, you know, to put it into a frame of mind or context, if the economy were to return, because we're talking about borrowing a couple of years out.
Right.
So, if we were to see a climb, I, I don't know what the bond market normally looks like, because I'm not ever in that market.
No, it, it's a good question, you're right. If, if the economy were to pick up, jobs were to pick up, because that, that's what usually drives, is how the economy's doing, if jobs are being created, inflation's going. The economy's still, even though it's gotten better, stabilized, it still hasn't really taken off like most people want it to, and that's what's keeping rates down. Now, is it possible the next couple of years, rates will go up? That's what a lot of people seem to think is going to happen. They've been saying that for the last three years, and they haven't. But if the economy picks up, yes, you'll likely see interest rates trickle, trickle up a little bit, but not up to eighteen percent.
I know it's with the new president of the Fed, isn't, isn't the Fed already talking about stopping quantitative easing? And isn't that, even though it's not immediate, isn't that a predictable effect that's going to be happening by the end of 2015?
It's, it's a good point, they are, they're, they're backing off on that. Everybody said interest rates are going up, that's it, end of the party. Wall Street firms bet on interest rates going up, they've come back down. Good article, today's Wall Street Journal, big article, it's, it's like, the economy needs to be creating more jobs, and inflation has to pick up for interest rates to go up. We're just not seeing that. We were just talking before for the meeting, you know, no one knows where rates are going, but some people say, "Well, you look what's going on in Japan and Europe." Rates have been low there for an extended period of time, for, for over ten years, rates have been low. So, people are saying, "Are we going to see that in the United States, where rates are just going to stay low for long periods of time?" I, I honestly don't know.
So, in other words, the, the artificial quantitative easing is?
Is already, they've already started that, it's backing off.
Right, but they're not, in other words, they were going to stop that, but they're not after all?
Well, they are, it's a process.
Right.
And they've already started to slow it down.
But that will have an effect on, on the, on the.
Yeah, that's what people thought, but, but the long-term interest rates have stayed relatively constant from where they were the last several years.
If the referendum were to pass, could you talk to us about how that would affect taxes for an individual taxpayer in the free towns?
Yeah, now, now that, that's something that's kind of a little detailed, yeah, but basically, from, from, from thirty thousand feet, I mean, the district would, assuming it passes, the district would issue the, the, the short-term debt and the bonds over a period of time. That would cause the debt service to go up, and that increase in debt service would be allocated to the member towns. So, yes, I mean, it, the impact would gradually go up. We've had some, some graphs on that, that we put together with, with Bob, and, and, you know, our, what we tried to do is, assuming that were to pass, is to gradually increase that, so there wouldn't be any one year where there'd be a big spike. It would just kind of gradually work its way up, and then gradually work its way down.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that increase that you're talking about in, in individual taxpayers' bill?
Right.
Is just based on this education budget? It's not based on per agreement with the selectmen, other factors that might increase in individual towns' taxes. So, in other words, one of the agreements we came to was that the selectmen agreed that the costs that would be incurred by the individual towns for mothballing or demolishing the structures would be incurred by those towns. So, there might be other costs inherent in this plan that are not, that we haven't really looked at.
I did.
Yes, that's true.
So, Mike, you might recall, when we had the public meeting, there was this graph, right? And this was how the forty-seven gets distributed over that thirty-two year period, right? It isn't level loaded at one point five, it's a little, it's choppy, of course, but this is the graph. The net, the net of that would get passed to the towns in the form of a budget. And over the thirty-two years, the average is four percent decrease. And each, in this line, there was one year, I think, where it popped up by a half a percent, but all the other subsequent years, it was below, or I'd just say a net decrease. So, the net of the bond cost, when you hit it against the ninety million dollars of savings, would be a budget decrease for Region Twelve. What happens beyond that? What the towns do, you know, the cost to maintain those buildings, the cost to repurpose them, the grand list, you know, and anything else that comes in, you know, the sale of the property for capital gain, is a big question mark around what follows that before you ultimately get to a, a tax increase at each one of the towns, right?
Lots of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, only because I have an information town meeting tomorrow night, and I want to be clear, if someone from Roxbury asks me what their taxes are going to be, what is the safe answer to say, if this passes, generically?
The portion of your taxes associated with the school budget will go down.
Okay, by four percent?
By four percent over the next thirty-two, over the next thirty-two years.
If they won't go up eight to twelve percent?
No. Now, it's not me.
I'm just, I'm just looking at your, your figure here in, in the reduction of square footage. Twenty-nine percent is the square footage of the combined three elementary schools removed.
Yeah.
And I believe we ended up with fifty-nine thousand square feet for the new building, replacing that, and therefore, that's certain between fifty-nine thousand and eighty-three seven thousand.
Twenty-nine percent is the net of, what, the old buildings and the new buildings.
So, that's, that's, that's the, elementary schools in isolation, as opposed to overall
That's correct.
school buildings, because it's only a nine percent decrease if you take in this building and the central office as well. And then furthermore, since we are talking about the difference between the, the Region Twelve taxes and the tax base for the towns in the regions, it's actually an increase of twenty-two percent of square footage, because these three buildings still exist and still have to be maintained by the same tax base.
I, I, I think you just came back to the same point Mike and I were talking about is what happens with those buildings. If Washington decides to sell their building, then that isn't true. If Bridgewater decides not to sell their building, then it is true. It, the, the maintenance cost switches from one budget to another. But relative to Region Twelve's budget and its facilities and its square footage, the twenty-nine percent reduction is what it is.
To, to the elementary schools?
Just to the elementary schools, not to the Region Twelve total footprint.
Well, I think it's important to remember that we're not responsible for those schools, we're just leasing them. If you left an apartment and your security covered whatever damage you had, when you leave, you don't care if that building bulldozed down or not. I mean, at no time in our conversation, in any of going far back into, beyond our long-term planning sessions, at no time did the selectmen say, "Give us a plan." And we frankly, it's not our charge anyway, but give us a plan for the three, three elementary school buildings. Those belong to the towns. That's the town's issue, that's the town's responsibility. A lot of people think we should, like, do something there. It's not our responsibility. And indeed, the local towns, at least I can speak for Washington, I think are rather enthusiastic about doing something about building, eventual. It's not our plan, it's not our responsibility, it's not our cost, period.
Well, I understand that, but I think what's being said is that there'd be some folks who will take it into consideration as fast as they can.
That's a shame.
Right.
Well, there are people who will take it into consideration, I think that's, that's a foregone conclusion, because they've asked the question, and it's important to ask the question, but every one of these buildings, as every building in the world that has ever vacant, every commercial building, every institutional building that's ever been vacated by its tenant, and I've represented a lot of people that have owned these buildings, I can tell you, returns it to productive use in a short order, and that's what happens to buildings. They get returned to another productive use, and once they're returned to a productive use, whether it be as housing, or by leasing it to a corporation, or by leasing it to another private school, or something else, then, then it becomes an even greater net gain to the budget. And not only is your school budget now on a lower trajectory, planned to, to save on average four and a half percent a year, but your, your town budget now would be reduced if those are returned to productive use. So, the other thing to take into consideration is on this chart that Anthony's been referring to, you do have that slight uptick in the, in the immediate years when we start paying interest on the bonds, but then, when the building comes online, you've got a nine percent drop in budget. So, over the next three years, just when the towns are implementing something new on those buildings, they're going to have a nine percent drop in the cost of education. So, it allows them to plan, execute and deliver the buildings to a more productive use, and if it requires a town investment, what better time to do it, when you've got a nine percent drop in your education budget, which is seventy percent of your town's budget? So, in actuality, the timing is, that is quite fortuitous, because it allows the towns to repurpose those buildings. Now, of course, in order to repurpose the buildings, you actually have to go out and plan, and you have to take steps, and you have to seek input from people. But of course, if you're assuming that nothing will ever change, then you can't do that. So, there's the problem. You need to get out there and actually execute that plan, and then it doesn't become a problem anymore, it becomes an opportunity, and that's how we convert problems to opportunities.
That's a good point.
At least, that was done in commercial real estate, I'll play that.
There is something that's a little comforting about looking years out and being able to plan or look forward and, and kind of stake that, boy, this is going to happen, because all, all the indicators lead to that. And I think, Emily, one of the things that you're running into, and perhaps will tomorrow night, is the unknowns, and there are too many unknowns relative to the local taxes, the decrease in real estate value and the overall impact of the tax, or to the taxpayer regarding the school. So, I think that's where some of the tax questions are, are coming from, there are an awful lot of unknowns that are making it a little less comfortable than simply looking ahead and having some sort of guarantee as, you know, this is the best way to go.
Okay, anyone else?
I was going to say, there may be unknowns, but there are certain knowns, and the knowns are that we've got an educational crisis in terms of our ability to educate children in classrooms that are tiny. We know that's a known, that, that's a problem, those kids are going to be disadvantaged, and they're going to be disadvantaged in a hurry. We have a known, which is that our buildings are aging, getting older, and that we need to, we need to have buildings that meet the needs for the district. Those are knowns, yes. Is it an unknown precisely what the interest rate will be? Sure. So, instead of saving forty-seven point one million, you might save forty-six point four five million, or instead of forty-seven point one, you might save forty-nine point two. There's a lot of unknowns, but they're unknowns at the margin. But, but what is definitely known is we have a crisis in education that has to be addressed, and, and we have an opportunity to do it, and in the process, reduce the trajectory of increases in taxes in the future by reducing the budget four and a half percent on average over thirty-two years. So, the knowns are that it's, that it makes a lot of sense, because over the course of this, looking at this exhibit, over the course of this, you're talking about taking forty-seven million dollars that we are currently pouring down into the abyss by having an inefficient system of offering education, you're able to recover forty-seven million dollars over thirty years. And if it's forty-six or forty-nine, it's going to be somewhere in that range, it's not going to be losing money. But the point is, we're actually going to have the opportunity to recover that. You know what that means? That means taxes can be lower, and it, and it also means that we'll have more money available to deal with this building, to deal with the other issues that come up, to deal with the rethinking and the reimagining of Chicago in a way that will allow it to prosper and survive. And those are the knowns, and we need to focus, we need to let people realize that, yes, there's an awful lot of unknowns in life, but here's the other known. The known is, if we continue on the path we're on right now, we're going to disadvantage every child in this education system at the elementary level, and we're going to pay more money to do it. Those are the two knowns that they need to be worried about. So, rather than worry about the fact you don't know everything, you should worry about the things you do know, and, you know, without getting into the Rumsfeldian statement of, when we know it, when we did know it, and, and can you know what you don't know and what you do know? I'll tell you one thing we do know, we've got a problem, and we have to deal with it. And if we kick it down the road, kick that can down the road another time, we're going to have just a bigger problem to deal with, because every time this problem comes back, it's bigger and harder to deal with. And so, th- those are the knowns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Susan.
I will just say that it is a known that there is no town in the, in, in all of New England that does not have an absence of a school within its border. And we know that, we understand that. There would be no, there's no other town that has no school in their border of some sort. So, that we know, and what we don't know is what would happen as a direct result of having absolutely no school within its border. We know that. We know from Prada's demographic projections, it does say that those projections will stabilize. It is unclear if they will go down and stabilize, or if they'll come back up and stabilize, but it is stated in those demographic projections that there will be stabilization in the future. And if, if his projections are correct, thirty-two years, how many students are going to be in the, in the facility in thirty-two years? You know, it's a, it's a lot of debt to take on. So, there are knowns, and there is a reason to be concerned of the unknowns.
All right. Jim?
Just, actually, Susan, you're right, because talking about the knowns and the unknowns, I think that, as you're saying, you know, the unknowns being, you know, questionable about the value, the value of your home, again, it's an unknown, because it hasn't happened in Connecticut, so for us to claim.
Hasn't happened anywhere in New England, is what I said.
Well, I mean, there's, I've heard that it has happened in places in Vermont, so I, and then I've heard that that number's been based on others, so I think a lot of perception gets called as a known.
I thought our study, pardon. I thought our, I thought our study said there is no, no town that does not have some school, even if that school is a private school, there is at least a private school in a town's border. That was the conclusion that we paid.
In Connecticut.
All in New England, and that's what I'm trying to talk about.
All right, hold on, please.
Go ahead.
The points have been made, okay? Whether, I don't remember exactly what it says, but the point has been made.
But my point being is that because it hasn't happened in Connecticut, that is an unknown, so to attach a number to an unknown is unfair, because we don't know. And as much as it could be a decrease in the value of our home, we play devil's advocate, and you can say, a new stateyard school in the region could attract people into our region, and it could end up doing the same thing, again, an unknown. Could happen, there could not. So, to really kind of attach a number to an unknown is misleading.
Okay. Helen.
Let me ask a rhetorical question. If this kind of scheme is such a great cost savings and education-enhancing endeavor, why is it that there is not any other town I know of that is rushing to consolidate its four or five elementary schools, or its three elementary schools in one building? Anywhere. It's not happening. No one's doing that. No one is doing that. Our neighbors in Newtown and in New Milford.
That might be a good answered question for the architects. Because they're working around the state, and they can tell you, give you examples.
But no one is going to make a unified, consolidated elementary school, nor any other towns that I know of, deciding to partner to all of a sudden eliminate their local elementary schools and build a new school together. This is a very.
Helen, we are not every other system, we are this system.
I have a floor, Jen, for, uh, point of order. The, the, the topic that was brought up is whether things are knowable or unknowable.
You asked some questions, I was trying to answer.
No, I'm not, I said it's a rhetorical question, I'm not looking for you to answer me or have a conversation with me. The, the point that was brought up is that some things are knowable, some things are unknowable. But what's proposed here is that we go down a path that's very unique. We don't know how that will end. And since no one else seems to be rushing to do this with abandon everywhere else, I'd say, no one else is completely sure that this will be a great cost-saving measure either, nor will it enhance education to the, to the benefit of the students, or everyone would be doing this, and we are unique and alone in this proposed solution.
Thanks, Greg. No, actually, we're not unique and alone. New Milford is closing the Pettibone School, so there are other towns that are closing, there are many towns in the state of Connecticut that have closed elementary schools and consolidated, and in fact, the town of Roxbury did it. The town of Roxbury consolidated eight one-room schoolhouses when they built Booth Free School. So, it's been done before, and it will happen again, and it will happen in other places. Also, in New England, there are other states, Maine has towns with no schools, Vermont has five towns with no people, much less no schools. But what, but what I'm saying is, is that it's not unique here, and we may be unique in a lot of ways, but here's one thing we do know, speaking of knowns, we know if you have lousy schools, okay? If you have problem schools, if you can't deliver education properly, you definitely have problems, you're definitely in the bad zone, and your schools, your property values definitely go down. That's one thing we do know, there's a lot of studies, we've seen them, like these people can tell you, but what I'm saying is, that's one thing we do know, and right now, we've got a problem. We've got a problem in that you've got a school that in eight years is going to have about twenty-six kids in it, and the other school's going to be also small, and not quite that small, but you've got.
but you've got two schools that are headed off the brink. That's one thing that's gonna create a problem here. In eight years, Bridgewater will be a two-room schoolhouse because you can't have classes of four people. The superintendent's already said that. So if it's gonna be a two-room schoolhouse, we may get a chance to go back and revisit what Roxbury decided to abandon eighty years ago when it, when it closed those one-room schoolhouses. But that's where you're headed. You know what happens when you get that small? It becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy because people start looking at that, and they start making choices to go elsewhere. And the smaller it gets, the worse it gets. That's an absolute certainty to happen according to these demographic projections. If they're right, and I think they probably are pretty close, but it's, that's a certainty to happen if we don't pass this referendum or do something. And therein lies the problem. Now, it could be something else we could do. I admit that. But guess what? This is where we are, and that's what we're likely to have happen. If we, if we wanna, and if we wanna put our property values and our concern about whether or not we can have the small town we thought we came here for, we moved here, ahead of the interests of our children, that's fine. But I, as a member of the board, am not willing to make that choice. I'm not willing to take that unknown to put the children second. But this all thing about maintaining property values and in, and in trying to maintain your small-town image is putting your children second. And I'm not basing this on something I pulled out of my head. I'm basing it on what the professionals in this school system have told us, from the superintendent to the building leaders, the principals, the other curriculum people, and everyone else down the line have all told us this. It's not a message that is something new. It's a message we've gotten from the people we hired to tell us these things. And I'm not willing to bark, I'm not willing to gamble with the welfare of the children in this district.
All right, thank you again, Alan. I'm really not quite sure what we're talking about this now because we have a referendum that's already coming up, although I guess it's-
While we're on the subject. While we're on the subject. Better than the day after.
We could, well, no, actually, the day after, we actually do something. And it's interesting to hear a lot of projections from board members that then eventually settle on other projections that one has to say they think are accurate. So it is a lot of thought, and we have a lot of conjecture here. And I just think dealing with actual facts is we do not have an educational crisis at the moment, and that there are no experts anywhere who have ever said that there is too small a classroom in an elementary school. Clearly, it's a matter of partly sociology of the size of an elementary school class and also what the grand list wants to support as far as its budget in terms of educating a tiny amount of kids. As far as self-sufficient, self-fulfilling prophecies, that happens when you make a town uninviting. But I'm still wondering why we're talking about all this now because we have a referendum.
We're about to move on.
Well, is there anyone else? Well, I think it's interesting that we move on when I start talking. But I've heard an awful lot from Mr. Thomas, who showed me the floor. But I would like to say that if we could move on, we just need to really move right on because we're not convincing anybody new of anything here, and we have a referendum, and even this-
We're just putting on, it's an information session. Team of the gentleman.
But I see these people right here.
Yes, so, the day-after referendum. Not knowing if this is gonna vote in favor of or against, I just want to bring everybody up to speed on what happens, next steps if this is approved. Both votes are approved. We have to supply, submit a grant application, actually, several grant applications to the state of Connecticut, and the filing deadline for that is June 30th of this year. So we would be submitting a grant for the new pre-K through five school. We'd be submitting a grant application for the repairs to this school, and we'd also be submitting a grant application for the ADA repairs for this school. The ADA repairs for the school do not have to go through the one-year legislative approval process, and we could start construction on the ADA renovations as early as the summer, pending documents, bids, getting the contractor on board and all approvals. What has to happen for the other two grants is we need to make sure that we've got the EdSpecs compiled, which has been done. Our enrollment projections are up to date, which has been done. All the approvals that have to be in place. The cost estimate has to be done, which has been done. Submit our space standards letters, have an eligible ineligible cost worksheet that has to be prepared, and our filed reimbursement cost sheet has to be prepared. And that all goes into what they call the EDO forty-nine form, which is the grant application form. On the approval side, the superintendent of the schools has to be authorized to apply for the grant. She's the one that actually submits the grant. This, this school board has to authorize forming of a formal building committee, which will be submitted with a grant application, and the project funding appropriations have to be put in place. That all gets pulled together and has to be in place before June 30th deadline. So pending the outcome of next Tuesday night's referendum, you may be seeing a lot more of us, or you may not be seeing a lot more of us pending the outcome. But I just wanted everybody to be aware that the referendum, if successful, does not mean the end of the level of effort that has to be put forward to get this grant application in place.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. It was very important.
Thank you.
Refreshing information. Refresh our information.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. This is not the item six old business, second reading policy six one four two point one oh one. Nutrition and physical activity. Wellness policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is the exact same policy that we went over. It was only two weeks ago, for the first reading. It was sent to electronically, so you should all have it. We added the one paragraph that is in red. It is regarding the bringing in of food to the classroom. I, the only person I think who was not here at the last meeting was Mike Macho, but we brought him to speak during the policy committee meeting. So unless there are any questions.
I move we accept this for separate reading. Policy six one four two.
I'll second it.
Second, is there any further discussion?
Yes. Once again, I just want the board to look with open minds that these are little kids in an elementary school that some principals or some teachers might or might not have. We should allow them to have the power to say yes or no to celebratory food. And the fact that we're going to outlaw that completely in the school system with basically no exceptions is really a crying shame. I know this seems like a small matter, but it's about the fact that we have great administrators who take care of the health and safety of our children, you know, good parents, well-meaning parents. The point of this is, is that we're not forcing every child to eat a cupcake. I respect these problems some children have with allergies. It's not about eating the cupcake. It's about the fun of being six-years-old and having your mom make the cupcakes and bring them to school. And if a child has an allergy and the teacher knows about that, bingo, do something else. But, but to prohibit that small, small, tiny, little infinitesimal joy from a six-year-old to celebrate their birthday, yeah, this is overreaching and it's nonsense. So open your minds here. If there's a big problem, our principals can handle it. We don't have to sit here as a board and outlaw cupcakes. Done.
Anybody want to speak? Kelly?
Yeah, I agree with Valerie. We don't need to fix what's not broken. I've never heard of a problem arise, and we have wise and experienced administrators who have so far done a great job in finding the right balance on this issue. I suggest we leave it in their able and capable hands, that we not limit the fun, that we keep options open as far as we can, and we trust them to do the great job they've been doing and not overreach. I'd probably so far.
All right. Michelle, do you want to speak first?
Yeah, I'm willing to see you speak first. I think she-
Oh, sorry, Susan.
That's okay. Let me just say, two of my kids are in a, in a classroom, and one of their classmates has an allergy, and they were very okay with the idea of permanently giving out cupcakes and treats as celebrations for birthdays, much to my shock and, and like, very, was very surprised at how gracious they were about it. You know, a child with allergies, if we remember the initial letter that that parent had written to the board, it was, it was rather impassioned, and it did speak to how ostracizing it could be, you know? It's not just one kid's family bringing in cupcakes. It is everyone in the classroom bringing in their cupcakes whenever there's a birthday, which is multiple times for a student with an allergy. And the multiple exceptions, you know, having something different or feeling different, I can, I can see how that would be a problem. And administrators could ban food in that particular classroom, but then that gets to, you know, you're the funky grade that doesn't get the, doesn't get the food. So I get, I get, I get the point, and I think kids would be a little more flexible than we give them credit.
The issue for the board is attempting to meet those individual circumstances is the board need to pass policy prohibiting this in all schools.
I just, I just wanna give you the point of example that WPS has had this policy in its own environment for a while now, and we don't have a case of highly depressed WPS students who didn't have cupcakes. So as a, as a pilot situation, it's been successful for whatever reason it was initiated there, and we're just trying to make sure that it's a, a, a policy that is effective throughout the elementary grades. And for those of you who are concerned that it's a very horrible, ugly lock with a heavy hasp replacing on the cookie shelf, there are exceptions that can be made. It's just, it's just the fact that in every classroom of any number of kids, there's cupcakes for every birthday except for perhaps one. And that's an awful lot of cupcakes to worry about. It's better just not have to worry about it.
Michelle, that's what I was asking. Is this supported by the administration? They're gonna ask for this?
Yeah, I wanted to speak to that. After the letter that we received from the parent, the, we had Kathy Corolla and the nurses come and sit with us, and they requested this so that we could be uniform in all of our buildings. And because it has been more of a problem than we as a board have been aware of, it makes it easy for them to direct the parents back to board policy. And I think that's a great, a great way of handling it uniformly throughout the district. So we're, it's, it's sitting here in the wellness policy because that's where other districts have been putting it, and it fits in with promoting health and wellness. But many districts have also been adding a policy very similar to their books because of the liability of students with allergies, because it can be very dangerous if somebody brings something in and mistakenly, it doesn't realize what, what they've put in there or that there's an allergy there and mislabeled something, send it into the teacher. That, that puts the board at a huge liability. So it's just a good policy for the board to have on the books versus just a building by building. I also just wanted to say that the nurses brought in a lot of literature that they have on helping parents find other ways to celebrate the birthdays. And it's not that the birthdays would go unnoticed, it's just that they will be celebrated with, with hats, with music, with pencils and erasers for gifts or other games, ways to honor and celebrate that child's day without bringing things into the classroom.
Okay. Sorry.
Why, when you call on me, do you always look at me with disgust? Maybe, Papa, everyone over on that side, keep on talking, but over here, oh my, eyes are rolling. Okay. In any case, this is the absolute-
I shouldn't have mean to roll my eyes.
You do it. Just roll them on the other side. You can roll them in. This is the definition-
Little kids every now and then.
This is the walking definition of micromanaging by this board. We are told repeatedly not to micromanage. Our responsibilities are to look at the budget, to help develop a budget with the administrators, to approve a budget. To, in this particular case, now we have a referendum. We should be up to speed on everything related to that referendum. We don't have to get in the candy and cupcake business. This is our administrators' jobs. They earn the money. They should have that decision. If it works well at WPS, wonderful. Maybe it won't be so well-received in Roxbury. Maybe those four children in kindergarten sitting in Burnham next year would actually like to have a party to celebrate themselves. And, and this prohibits carrot sticks, celery, granola bars, God forbid.
Although, Alan said that it would be exceptional, Michelle.
No, this talks, I'm still talking.
I'm sorry. You stop.
You're rolling. Yeah, I take a breath, not like Papa. Papa can go on and on and not take a breath. I have to breathe. I'm only- But the point is, this is the definition of micromanaging board members. Can we just walk away and say, administrators, if that's what you want in your buildings, please do that, but consult with your PTO and families? But for us to sit here and spend any kind of time and effort about banning cupcakes for birthday parties, or cookies, or raisins, or any number of foods, it's absurd, and it's anti- childhood. I'm done again.
Okay. Jennifer?
Well, I have to say, as much as I enjoy a cupcake, I don't, and I, I actually agree with Valerie, but I also agree with the other side as well because I'm okay with my kid, my son, not having cupcakes in class. I've gotten used to it, so I'm, I'm fine with it, and he is too.
He's okay.
He's fine. He's, he's all right. There, there's other issues, but he's all right. So-
The micromanaging issue.
And I, and we, and there is, we do a great job of allowing the kids to celebrate, and yet there's still special times when we can, whether it's the ice cream social that we have at the beginning of school year, or whether we're celebrating Culture Day, and people can bring in, you know, food from their culture. I guess for me, the concern that I have is that I do worry about the, the ones with allergies because I certainly don't want to make them feel different. But I also worry about needing to accommodate the entire school under that one allergy too and being able to make sure that, so, and I know that Michelle's done a good job of going through the policy to make sure that that's okay. I guess for me, I do like the cupcakes, and I do worry about those special times, whether it be, for me, I keep thinking about Family Fun Night, where we do have food at those moments, and because the policy is gonna be in place, I don't want that to then change the direction of how some traditions have always been. And so even for a school like WPS, who is very mindful about it, there are some things that we still do as tradition that I would hate to see change due to this.
Today's birthday, today's birthdays, tomorrow it'll be family fun night.
It says some curricular or event-based activities may receive an administrative approval.
Right. No, I guess, I understand, I do understand that. That's why I said I appreciate that Michelle put that in. However, I just worry that it could be taken in.
Oh, do worry. Do worry.
A little bit of worry.
One question, and then, I don't know, my opinion, but is Valentine's Day gonna be an exception? Because that's the only thing Owen asked was, what are you doing on Valentine's?
We don't do Canada.
So you don't do Canada? You don't doubt. So then I have to say, I love cupcakes a lot, but I do have a son with a gluten allergy, so I do understand what they're saying. But I'm trying not to look at it as losing cupcakes. I'm learning it as a gaining of a healthier self that I wish I learned. So when I come home from work and I'm crabby, I don't eat a cupcake. Like, maybe they have better coping skills because they will learn like yoga or something to celebrate. So maybe they're learning, they're gaining, not losing.
All right. Michelle, go ahead. Thank you.
I just wanted to say-
Recognize the nurses?
Yes, that our nurses are here and-
Any of you ladies want to be here and ask policy?
Or Kathy, Bill, do you want to?
Sure. It's not just-
Would you stand and just tell me, please?
Sure, I'm Lisa McQueen. I'm the school nurse from Burnham School in Bridgewater. And it's, it's in the whole nation where we have a crisis of this, and in our maybe small microcosm, it doesn't seem that way. And it's a much bigger thing than I think you see. It's like cupcakes and cookies and day after day, it's something. And there's a lot of parents at home that are trying to feed their kids better, you know, choosing the ingredients that go in food, not just for allergies, but just to have, you know, to be healthy. And we're, we're just allowing, we're just feeding kids all this junk, and we don't even have their okay for that. It just seems wrong to me. And, and also beside the allergy thing, which is another thing that's really much bigger than you realize, every single thing that comes into the school, I have to check every ingredient. It's then, you know, up to me to make sure every single ingredient is okay, and kids-
And kids come in without doing that, and then I'm looking in these beautiful eyes saying, you're here with these cupcakes and, you know, we have a big problem because we can't hand them out. It's not taking away any fun. There's lots of ways to have fun without food. That's the problem. Everything always with fun involves food in our country. And it's nice to, you know, just be able to have birthdays, for one thing, just more controlled. We're still going to celebrate other things, you know, fundraisers at the middle school, things that the administration feel like we can do safely, you know, looking at allergies and trying to pick safer foods. But it's a move towards what President, what Michelle Obama is doing. It's a whole national thing to move, and it is a school thing. It's the health and wellness of our kids, so it is our responsibility. That's how I feel about it.
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
And can I also say, I appreciate that, that in the policy, there is leeway. I mean, we did put the statement in that does say that administration can...
Case-specific cases.
Exactly. And that allows for those special occasions. But it helps us to decrease, as Lisa's been trying to say, the number of times kids bring in foods. We also need to look at the obesity rates of students, of children. And if we don't teach them how to eat properly at the elementary level and move forward, part of that is our job too, and we need to move forward in that direction. There are other districts that are also doing the exact same thing. We're not different than many districts that are now putting it into their wellness policy. And it is a policy, as Michelle had said the last time, that can be looked at after a year. We can revisit the policy and see if it's working or if it's not working. But please understand, we're not taking away everything. We want children to enjoy school, to have celebrations, and there will be times like Aloha, like the Ice Cream Social, like some of the other traditions that we have, that there will be food that will be served. But it'll really decrease the number of times that, you know, instruction is prevented because we've got cupcakes coming in, or parents forget to notify the offices. Both my nurses have to check ingredients. And the other piece about that is, they could get a cupcake, or a cookie, or some kind of a treat that really was mixed with nuts that we didn't know about, and that can affect a child too.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
But the point here is whether the board makes it a board policy, or whether the administrators make it their personal policy. And I'm not saying that if we vote this out, that you're going to be flooded overnight with an abundance of ice cream cakes, cupcakes, cookies, and candies. That's still your decision. You say no to that school, or no to that event. I respect you as an administrator. And whether it should be a board policy is the question, to outlaw this sort of thing completely, whether you as administrator think it's a good idea or not. I don't think it's board policy right now, and I don't think, I think we are exhibiting an amazing amount of hypocrisy, because this board is the same board that allowed smoking on the property at this school forever and ever and ever. And all of a sudden now we're wrapping ourselves in the nutrition flag. Please outlaw cupcakes if you wish. It shouldn't be a board policy, that's all. Micromanaging.
Tony?
Do I understand this correctly, that we're really doing this at the request of the administrators to help them be able to face the parents and say, this is a board policy, and not have to fight about it at the local level? Is that really what's happening?
Yeah, yes. I mean, it came to our attention because of a letter from a parent, but the administration asked for our, asked for the policy to come from the board to support them in that. So, and I think it is our job to do that.
Okay. Jessica?
Again, I'm with Valerie's thoughts on this. I don't want the board being micromanaging. I don't think that we should be involved in this level of detail. The fact that Washington has a policy that works for them is absolutely fine with me. And if the other schools want to institute the same kind of policy, that is absolutely fine with me. But there seems to be an effort to kick things up to the board. And this is not the only occasion, where if you don't like it, you're going to have to talk to the board about it, instead of the administrators at the superintendent level or the school level. And I don't think that's the proper way for things to go. This is not the first time this has happened. I see this encroaching. And again, we should not be managing the day-to-day operations of these schools. That includes what people bring to school to eat as private citizens, which are children and their families are. We shouldn't be in that level of detail. That's not part of our charter of operation. We have people we've hired to do that, and I think they should have the responsibility and have the actions. I'll support whatever they like, with whatever they choose, but I don't think it's our job. And again, if it works for Washington and they want to try it in the other schools, great.
Okay. Some board members may feel that it is their responsibility, is what goes in and out of the board.
And some don't.
I move the question. Is there a question I can move?
Yes. This policy is on the table for consideration. I can move the second. All right, Peter moves questions. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed, three opposed. Any abstaining? Any motion to move the question? Do you have that?
I guess.
To move the question passes, so this policy, excuse me, 6142.101A, Student Nutrition and Physical Activity, Student Wellness Policy, report to the board for a second reading. All those in favor of the policy?
Can I ask a clarifying question? It's nothing more than to get us understanding of what this, this means high school, middle school too. So this is district-wide, correct?
Correct.
District-wide. No cupcakes in high school. Okay.
All those in favor of approving 6142.101A as a second reading policy to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Are you sure? Two opposed. Any abstaining? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Peter?
I think, I think I'm going to nickname Valerie Cupcake.
That might be seen as harassing, Peter. Be careful.
Yes, there's a policy.
There's a policy on this.
All right. Item 71 to Consider appropriate revised form of calendar, last date for students on June 18, half-day, and professional development for staff on June 19 and 20. Is that your proposal?
Yes, it is.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is it moved? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's moved in second. Dr. Tino, can you take this, please?
This is in response to the administration. We feel that those two days for professional development at the end of the year would be very beneficial for the staff and not so beneficial for the students. Students have 184 days currently. The state regulation is 180, so they would have 182 days if we were to end school on June 18. All graduations and promotion at the middle school and the high school have been taken care of. All trips have been rescheduled, so this is what we're proposing.
Greg?
I think it makes perfect sense. And the reason is because we've just entered into a new contract with the teachers. And by part of that contract, we reserve the right to drop the schedule to 182 days and to take those two days and make them this exact type of educational type things for teachers. So I think it's, since that's going to be in effect commencing next year, it's perfectly sensible to do it now, I think, especially since this opportunity takes long.
It's been moved in second.
It's up for discussion, Michelle.
I have a question and a comment. First question was, was that one, was the field trip that was conflicting with this?
No, they've been changed.
They moved it. Okay, great. Then I would like to speak in favor of this, because I think with the change in curriculum, our teachers are under a lot of time constraints and stress trying to get up to date. But I would like to say that I, I know boards before us worked very hard to work for those 184 days, and I'm proud of that. And I, I know people always say, oh, but it's just the last two days. But if you change the last two days, it means two days earlier in the year were productive academic days. The last two days are always cleaning out lockers. But I think it's important instructional time, and I think that I wouldn't want to set it as a precedent. But maybe for the next year or two, as we're transitioning into Common Core, I see that as very valuable professional time. And hopefully the teachers will treat it as such and not clean out their lockers.
Twelve seconds, Michelle. Thank you. Anything else? All right, so moved in second to approve the calendar change. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, it's moved in second to approve the expenditure of funds for the printing of a brochure, explanatory text, posters, signs to inform the public that the vote is recommended and approved by the Voting Advisory Committee on Tuesday, April 8, 2014. Dr. Kasten?
Yes. We met, there were five of us. It was Greg, Michelle, myself, our attorney, Gary Bouchou, and Susan Stumpf. We spent almost, almost three hours developing, first of all, I think it's in your packet or you sent it. This is the one sign that's going to go home to students. Everything has been approved by council and the SEC, which is, somebody help me. Election Commission.
State election enforcement committee.
Right, everything, so this is what go home, and we're running that off internally. Then we have the explanatory text, which again, you all received, and again, very, it explains, but it doesn't advocate. And then we just received today the flyer, which we just got, the brochure. Again, this has been approved by our attorney. Bob sent it to Bob Council, and it went to the SEC. I'm not, you had already approved this, I don't know, in March, but I wanted to bring it back to the board just so that you could approve it one more time. If you, if you want to know the costs, the costs are going to be, I have it written down on my agenda. It's about $5,120, I believe. One second, let me find it.
That's for the brochure?
The brochure is $4,300. The mailing is $640, and the explanatory text is $210. So, and these are rounded numbers, but very close. $5,150, and that's what we're asking you to approve tonight.
Donna?
Where is the explanatory text? How's that going to be presented?
We are going to get the copies and give them to the town clerks on Friday.
Okay. There's a little typo here.
Oh, tell us.
This was checked. Under question one, a yes vote means a pre-K elementary school, it would be a pre-K to five.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You see that?
Yes.
Otherwise, we're going to have a very expensive pre-K up here.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, there's Alan.
I have a question about the explanatory text. Question one, if it passes, would close the K5 elementary school in each of the three towns? But that's not listed under the yes vote. So I would think that the explanatory text would need to be amended to show the full extent of what the yes vote means. Yes vote means that the regional plan is amended to allow for the construction of a entirely pre-Kified elementary school in Chilwell Gardens and the closing of the elementary schools in each of the three towns.
That was a very extensive discussion with our council. Sue was there, Greg was there. That has nothing to do with what people are voting on as far as the amendment to the regionalization plan. He made that very clear, that advocating either way is inappropriate, and we cannot include that. This is what we can include.
But the language of the regional plan that says there must be a K5 elementary school in each town is being removed. So you're not advocating, you're explaining exactly what the amendment does. So I would wonder why anyone would want, would quibble over adding clarifying information? How is this such a long discussion? Who would want to hide that information from the explanatory text?
Well, all right, hold on. There's no motion to approve the explanatory text. I don't know, you're looking for a motion to approve money?
Honestly, we're looking to approve the money, because all of this was approved already by the three people at that meeting. Now, some people were unhappy with the attorney's interpretation, but we all came to an agreement before we left. And so I, you know, we can't go back. We can't go back.
Sure we can.
No, we cannot.
Why not?
I'm moved that we amend the explanatory text to mention the large detail that the elementary schools will be closed. In the form of writing, a yes vote means that the regional plan is amended to allow for the construction of a consolidated pre-K5 elementary school on the Chappaq campus and the closure of the elementary, the existing elementary schools in each of the three towns.
Second. You want discussion on that?
Yeah, hold on, please. I'm just writing it down.
Do you inform our president, please?
I'm sorry, Valerie, did you have to...
Well, if we're going to make any changes to this...
The explanatory text is not even before us. There's been no motion to approve it, so...
Well, we're talking about it.
All right, go ahead.
And evidently, a motion was just made.
It was made to amend it.
Right.
Something that's not before us. Go ahead.
Well, did you accept the motion if it's not before us? Go ahead.
If we're talking about paying for something, then we might as well make sure that we're happy with what we're paying for.
Because there was a motion.
Does the motion is to approve the explanatory text as amended? Yes.
And it was seconded, and now I'm having a conversation about it.
Go ahead, please.
I think that, you know, we have to follow the dictates of the attorney that we hired, whose knowledge we respect, to make any change of this wording right now. Calls into question bigger issues. I think it goes without saying, literally goes without saying, that question one is about amending our region plan to obviously get rid of the K5 elementary schools in each of the three towns. You don't have to say that three or four times. You don't need to say it again and again. That first sentence says it.
That's a little in question.
And we can't really pretend to lawyers, and we are not. This is the way we get in trouble.
Wow. I believe it's in the brush, in the question.
The question.
Is it in the question?
The question is not.
The question is what?
It says deleting the language elementary grade K through five to remain in their present hometown, which appears on page two, page two of the plan, and replacing the language with a pre-K to five to follow the elementary.
This is just to explain this.
The explanatory text explains what that means.
Explains the question, so we might as well fully explain it.
That would be the main point of the explanatory text, I would think.
Well, who else is here? There's one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we didn't go around about this. And my understanding was, there was, there might be some consideration, some additional consideration outside of that meeting, to language, even if it was a little more vague, a little more factual and not persuasive. And I do recall specifically mentioning that, you know, perhaps a statement to the effect of the pre-K to five school will be the only elementary school, Region 12 will only operate. I think that is, I think that that addresses the elementary schools going away. I think that is fact without persuasion. And that was something that was, you know, I would be, I will get back to you on that. I think it's reasonable to mention that, because this explanatory test is meant to explain what will happen to the taxpayer voting yes or voting no. And yes, it is embedded in the overall question, but the purpose of simplifying what a yes vote and what a no vote is, is to explain in very basic terms what that outcome would be.
Can I suggest wording? Would it like work? It's very simple. Instead of A, say one. Third line, end of the third line, calls for one instead of A. And that makes a pretty... And that makes it pretty clear what we're talking about. Everyone needs to count. What do you think?
Greg, I'm sorry.
I was at the meeting too, and I counsel had issues with being careful to avoid advocacy. And I, for one, am not going to take a flyer and ignore the advice of the council, who has approved this explanatory materials, at the risk of being one of the people who has to stick his hand into his pocket to pull out the money to pay the fine from the State Elections Enforcement Commission if we do something that our council said don't do. And we are wrong.
He did not specifically say not to do it.
He had problems with it.
He did not specifically say not to do it, and nor has he gone on record as saying, "We should not do that because..."
You know, he had concerns about departing very far from the text that's here. And I don't want to...
He had little to say about that very neutral statement that I put forward.
Well, I'm voting against it.
Except that he, you know, would give back.
Kelly?
We have a brochure here that I guess we're going to spend $5,000 to send out. This has seven photographs in it and at least two architectural renderings, along with financial details, et cetera. This is explanatory information on one side. This information would give a lot of detail and support the idea of what this school will look like, how attractive it would be. Here's the rendering of the plot. There's not a mention of anything related to the reality of the closure of the three elementary schools. That is, within the realm of the law, I am certain, because it is what will happen. If this is not advocacy, then certainly mentioning the fact that those schools will be closed and region twelve will no longer operate local elementary schools in each of the towns cannot be considered advocacy. This, seven photographs and a couple of drawings, and you cannot put in a line that says your local elementary schools will be closed and the consolidated school will be the only school that will be operated, is simply a factual statement.
I don't understand. We get a committee together, represented by one person from each town, and a superintendent and an attorney, and we're going to second guess them at this point? And what do we have the committee for to begin with? It's been an argument. I mean, most of the time, we have this problem about all three towns weren't represented, but they were here. I don't get it. I mean, I don't see how...
Tony, it was left as an open-ended question. It was not.
It was, absolutely. I did not leave that meeting with an understanding that it is...
All right, hold on, all right.
The attorney said no.
Susan, please. Tony's got the floor, he's talking. They're saying that there was disagreement, that they didn't come out of the... The superintendent disagrees, but Susan's saying they came out of the meeting with questions that were open. And this is where the rubber hits the road, right here. So, we've got to deal with it. I'm sorry that we don't have an agreement coming out of our three-person committee.
May I?
Yes.
I went, and I don't have it right in front of me. I can go look on my phone. When I got this explanatory text, I sent it to Greg. I believe I sent it to you. I don't think I sent it to Michelle. And I sent it to Sue. And I said, "This is our attorney's explanatory text. Please send me any questions or information." And no one responded. Sue, your response was, "Where's the brochure?" That was your response.
Is that what the hour and a half? Read this and get it back to anybody by an hour and a half?
Excuse me. That was your response. You didn't say, "I need more time to look at it." You didn't say, "I have concerns or questions." You didn't say, "I don't agree with this." You said, "When are we getting the brochure?" So, you know, listen. In my opinion, either you go ahead with this or you don't do it. But, you know, to sit down again... We don't have the time to sit down again for another three hours and fight this out and try to figure out what we're going to write. So, it's up to you. Either keep it or don't keep it. But, you know, let's not think we're going to change words, because I don't know how you do that when the S E E C has already approved it. And so, it's fine, Chris.
Wait a second. All right, hold on. Kelly?
A committee of three is not the board. The committee simply recommends to the board. Now, we discuss it and we decide. The committee of three is not binding, so not a superintendent. And this is a perfect example of the kind of partisan railroading that has been going on since the beginning of this project discussion that is going to lead to the failure of this referendum.
Susan, there is not going to be railroading. It's an information presented, then a majority of the boards decided to move forward in a particular way. Greg?
I was just going to say, if you don't have the votes, it's not railroading. You don't have the votes. You haven't persuaded a majority. But the one thing I will say, just about the pictures, because you raised it, is that the council specifically discussed these with the state Elections Enforcement Commission. These were deemed to be not... They were deemed to be appropriate and deemed to be not advocacy. So, that's already been checked. And I will say that I think Susan may have left the meeting not happy with some of the resolutions and things. But I think she was the only one that left the meeting not happy with it. But I think she was one that left not happy. So, I would say that she did.
All right, well, look, there's a motion on the floor.
It wasn't an open-ended question?
Well, no, it was only open-ended on your part. It wasn't open-ended by the rest of the people there. But it was open-ended on your part.
I have a question.
Gary was supposed to get that.
Hold on, please, please. Peter?
I just want... Are you going to do this in color?
Yes.
It's not going to be a black line?
Yes.
No. Well, nobody said...
There's a motion on the floor to add the language and only one primary school... Oh, I'm sorry. And the closing of the three elementary schools in each of the three towns to add to the second paragraph of the explanatory text. First, can we speak to... Well, it's the second. A yes vote means at the end of that paragraph, "And the closing of the three elementary schools in each of the three towns." That's the motion on the floor to approve the explanatory text.
Hold, do you put it down?
Is there anything else?
Okay. It's the addition of closed. Not shuttered, not door slammed shut, just closed.
It says, "And the closing." And adding to that... "And the closing of the three elementary schools in each of the three towns." That's the motion.
One more question about that.
Yes.
If we decide that we want to make the case, do we have time to do it?
Yes.
Because we don't have time to do it.
It's a page...
Well, it has to go back to legal. And then, it has to go back to bond council. And then, it has to go back to the S E E C. And we've already discussed it, and he advised us against it. But I will do it.
Well, hold on. This is not... Hold on. We're not talking about the question, the legal question to be voted on. This is explanatory text, a piece of paper that's laying in the foyer when you come in to vote.
Right.
People pick it up and read it.
And it should not be advocacy. That needs to be judged.
All right, okay. All right. So, there's a motion on the floor. It's... Kelly?
I believe that you may complicate things by leaving this simple and very clear explanatory language out of your explanatory materials, because someone can go to the state and make a pretty good case that this is weighed in one side. And leaving that explanatory clear street text out is a deliberate attempt to weigh things to one side. I might be the person who does that and makes that complaint, because I really believe that this is...
We've been told that this text in front of us is... Excuse me, Kelly. It's been approved by our attorney.
I know. Of course it is. That means it's legal and allowable. It doesn't mean it's the perfect text or the other text. Other texts would also be legal and allowable. But I...
So, you were going to attack this text. This has been approved.
Yes, it's been approved. But it is lacking in its efficiency, which can be remedied by simply adding the clear and simple language that would state the other side that's not held up by the...
Uh-huh. That's the problem. You can't state the other side.
Hold on, hold on.
The seven photographs and two renderings and full-color brochure meant to support and elucidate the facts on one side, when you can't even put a short, brief sentence to elucidate the facts on the other side? It should be balanced.
All right. Emily?
Do we have to have explanatory text?
No, you shouldn't.
Is it like a binding legal thing? Because this is... I mean, we voted on this 7,000 times. This is very clear. This is what we're voting on.
We're not talking about that.
That's what I mean. But if you don't have this, which is apparently confusing, this is what you're voting on. Read it. Vote?
Vote.
Can I remind the board, please, that by an outstanding majority, this board approved this plan, these costs, this thing? And the rules of the board are that once the majority agrees to do something, our individual personalities, our individual desires go away. It is a board decision. Everything here is a board decision. We're merely just giving the information to people. We've lived and breathed this, but a lot of people haven't. So, let's not say it's, you know, we're being snowballed or something horrible is happening to the opposition. No. We support this. End of story. It's the rule. It's the law of the state of Connecticut and the statute that supports a board of ed's. We all have to support this. Or resign from the board. That's the way it goes. I mean, hey, I'm greatly disappointed about cupcakes. But, you know, that's it. Okay? That's it. And this is it. And there's no more discussion about this. We're all behind this. In terms of the explanatory text, I am definitely not going to go up against our attorney and risk any kind of issue. I think certain words are going to be inflammatory. Closing, shuttering, whatever is. We're simply describing what's going to happen. Those three schools will not exist. We will regionalize. Period. Done and finished.
Thank you. Shaw?
Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I'm not sure. I couldn't stay for that entire three hours. But I personally felt that I wanted... I want the explanatory text to be clear. I want everyone to know. I think it's pretty... It seems pretty clear to me that when you strike the language K-5 to remain in the present hometown school and you add, "Build a consolidated school on Chippewa," that that's pretty clear. But I certainly wouldn't want anyone to be confused. But every time we asked the lawyer about adding language, it came back to the question. And as soon as you start speaking, adding language outside the question... And I don't know if they envisioned that by saying those schools will be closed, but then there could be confusion because the town will have it opened as something for other, some other purpose. That's not our... In our purview, it's outside the question. I don't know where the confusion was about that. But every time the language was brought up to mention what happens with those three schools, it was said that that is outside of the question that was being presented and it was no longer... I don't know. Speaking too specifically that question. So, I don't think... I just want it to be clear that nobody wants the explanatory text to not explain what's happening, which is that we were tied by the language of the question. And we cannot speak outside of exactly what it says. So, I think the intent of the explanatory text was to just boil it down to not have the... Which appears on page two of the plan and et cetera, to just say it in plain language, but not speaking outside of the question.
All right. Is there anything further? There's a motion on... Let me just go over it again. There's a motion on the floor to approve the explanatory text made by Alan. It's amended to add the language at the end of the second paragraph. Go ahead.
I understand that this language has been approved without its amendment by the attorney. But from what I understand, that was the language presented to the attorney. And it's not as if he had disapproved or would not approve adding language, which is explicit to what the amendment of the regionalization plan does. And I am very concerned as to why one would... What one would gain by not having it? That's my question. What do the people who felt that it was not necessary or desirable to not have that language in explanatory text, if unless you feel that you're going to have a voter who otherwise would not realize that the elementary schools would be closed, and you don't want to tell that voter that, and maybe they will vote yes, not knowing that, there is no reason why you wouldn't want that in the explanatory text. Because in the question itself, it says elementary grades K-5 to remain in their present hometown schools will be deleted. Now, the reason we're doing explanatory text is because we are so familiar with the actual language of the questions that we understand them. But most voters that I have talked to, and I'm sure if you talk to them, despite what the lawyers and what members of this board feel, this is a very opaque lot of language here, and we need explanatory text. Now, if we want to be very picky and just use language from here, we could also say, "And the elementary schools will no longer remain in their present hometown schools." Elementary grades, because that's language right out of the question. All I'm saying is, it strikes me as somewhat fishy that we would not even mention that in explanatory text. And that's why I've asked that we add that in there. And I can't imagine, first of all, I can't imagine that the attorney would have a problem with this. Also, I can't figure out how... I'm not clear on how the attorney would... would, has passed this by the S E E C already. From what I understand, that's quite a process. And that you don't just call up the S E C and, hey, say, what do you think of this? So, I'm not sure where the chain of information is missing here, but I'm not really sure that's actually happened. And also, the superintendent mentioning that this is passed bond counsel, this question number one has nothing to do with bond counsel. That's question number two. So, there's subtleties here, which I'm not sure are completely nailed down as to how this process has happened. And I think that all we need to do to be perfectly clear is to be perfectly clear.
Thank you. Anything further? Kelly?
Yeah, let me ask this question. And this is a real question, Jim. Not a rhetorical question. Why do we need all this as explanatory supportive information? Why do we need all this? I would say-
Just the board of education. Ask me a question.
I know. I would venture to guess it's because we have, well, we voted for it, but it's so that people can better visualize what will really happen if they vote for this school and these repairs. So, it helps the public visualize specifically and exactly what is going to happen. Why do we not have anything to help the public visualize what will happen also in their local community with their present situation?
I can answer that. Good. Because we don't know what's going to happen to those schools. Because each town may do different things with those. No. They would, they-
All right. Hold on, folks, please.
If I, I might remind you, Kelly, you were the person that said the almost certain thing that's going to happen in Burnham is that school's going to become a private school after it closes. Because it's the perfect place for a private school. You said that. Well, you said, now you're saying it may, but you say you were pretty certain about it then. All I'm saying is, we don't know. We don't know. We don't know. And it would be, if we do not know, and it would be improper, it would be improper for us to speculate on what the towns might do. I don't know what Washington's going to do to that school.
That we are no longer going to be operating as the language that Allen added to this moment.
Well, technically speaking, technically speaking, and that's another problem, because technically speaking, the leases don't end until we appropriate them, after the thing. But that's technical point, I admit. But the point is, we do not know what's going to happen to those. And to say your school will be closed may have a meaning that advocates without providing any elucidation.
This is why this referendum's going to fail. What do you mean?
Michelle?
I just wanted to quickly reiterate that at that meeting, Susan many times tried to find a way, a creative way to say that, that would meet-
A neutral way.
Neutral, create, whatever. Like, because I really wanted it there, too. Because it seemed to explain, which is the point. But in many different ways, Susan put that phrase, none passed the muster with the lawyer. He felt that they were speaking outside of the question. They were not, they were into the realm of unknown. They, I, it was not that it was not attempted. And I feel that many different solutions were proposed, and none seemed to meet what he felt would work. So, I felt that, at least when I left, he was, we had not found wording that worked for him yet. And a lot was proposed, several different ways of saying that the three schools will close.
Zoe?
I don't like the word "fishy." I don't like the motives of people who are just trying to, you know, put out information that we all voted to adopt, all voted to adopt. I don't like people saying, this seems fishy. That doesn't make sense. I mean, you know, there's a lot of integrity here that's being conflated, and it's not proper. Now, I know I'm risking a certain member of the board throwing things down and pitching a fit, but the point is, we all voted for this. It's what the lawyer agrees in terms of the wording for the explanatory text, but we all backed this referendum. And I move the question.
I move the question.
Aye, I'm certain.
Is there a second to move the question?
Second.
All those in favor of moving the question, which is to vote on Allen's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your hand. All opposed to moving the question, raise your hand. Any abstentions? What's the vote?
Seven yes, five no.
All right. The motion moved the question, passes. So, Allen has moved to approve this explanatory text in the second paragraph, amending the second paragraph. A yes vote means that the regional plan is amended to allow for the construction of a consolidated pre-K elementary school on the Chapag campus, and the closing of the three elementary schools in each of the three towns. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Take that. All those in favor of the motion made by Allen-
You're on the amendment. I'm sorry.
Any opposed? Raise your hand. Any abstentions? All right. What's the result?
Three yes, eight no, one that abstained. Motion dropped.
Okay. So, the motion fails. Is there any?
I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
To approve the expenditure of funds totaling $5,150, not to exceed $5,150, from the printing of brochure, explanatory text, posters, signs, to inform the public of the vote as recommended and approved by the Voting Advisory Committee on Tuesday, April 8, 2014.
Is there any further discussion? Allen?
I'd just like to clarify that we haven't voted on any of this or approved any of this before, because this is during the quiet, what we call the quiet period, of a pending referendum. So, nothing that we have approved in the past has any bearing on this whatsoever. And certainly, we have not approved any explanatory text yet. I would suggest that the attorney has been wrong before. The attorney was actually wrong on our original question, on our actual question, on this part right here, which is why we have a delayed referendum until the 29th. It was supposed to be, I believe, the 13th or something, whatever it was. So, I'm not sure whether the attorney just has to double-check things sometimes, or whether he is not familiar with some of these details. I don't know why it is, but I would consider him infallible in this situation. I really would suggest that this is nothing that the S E E C would trifle with. This is clearly a, something that we're sending out, not to inform people, as that, as that bright poster is, that there's a vote on the 29th, and go and vote. This is to try to get, this is to try to sway a vote here, which is the whole point of why we have a quiet period. We don't expend taxpayer funds on trying to sway a vote, because we already sent this identical flyer out. In other words, if they already have it, what are we, and that was before the quiet period, why are we sending it out again? They have it already. The reason we're sending it out again is because even at that point, perhaps, although it wasn't as carefully dictated by the S E E C, we're sending it out in order that people might look at it and go, wow, you know, that's beautiful. I want that. I'm going to vote for that. And that's advocacy. And the S E E C has a very fine line and a lot of statute that has to do what is considered advocacy. Believe, the commission utilizes an objective standard and evaluates whether a reasonable person would believe that a communication urged them to vote in a particular manner. Now, we all know what this is. These are beautiful renderings with site plans.
I have to tell you which way to vote.
And I would suggest that they look a lot like, they look a lot like things like this, which are beautiful renderings and site plans of residential homes, that people, this is a sales brochure. So, if this has an alternate of not having you buy this and buying another to be constructed property, or staying where you live, that's always an option. But what this does is, this shows you what you would get if you bought this. And that's exactly what this does.
Isn't that what we want, to see what the money is going to buy us?
Yes.
The money itself would put a lot of people off.
Everybody knows this already. We can't spend taxpayer funds on it at the moment.
Please. There's a motion on the table, I believe, to approve 5150. It's been seconded?
Yep.
Yes.
That's what we should be speaking on. If we then want to have a motion to approve these materials, which maybe should come first, before the spending of the money, to bail them out.
I'm just following the agenda.
I'm saying that if we don't approve the expenditure, the materials don't go out. Okay, fine. There's a motion on the table to approve the expenditure, and it's been seconded. Is there anything further?
Do you want me to amend my motion to approve of and spend money for?
That's up to you.
That's what I'm going to amend my motion to, approve of and spend money for the mailing of, not to exceed, 5150.
Who's seconded?
Second.
All right. Second. As amended. Is there anything further?
You know, I'm opposed to the mailing for, the primary reason being that the purpose, as far as I understood, with these materials were to inform in a very objective way. And I think maybe through no fault of, the process was such that it watered down the language to make it even more confusing. I think we've talked about a number of things that could be confusing to people, rather than helping them make an informed vote. I'll point out one other. Inside the brochure, if you open it up, it says, "Proposed pre-K five elementary schools," in bold, and underneath it says, "projected opening, fall 2017." Above that, Chapag Valley Middle High School, it reads as "repairs to commence summer 2014." I would read that to mean that it's going to happen regardless of how you vote. There's, the word "projected" really qualifies it. There's no qualification in the sentence above. It looks like that's going to happen. I would, and obviously, I understand that since we've been talking about it, but I could see somebody opening this brochure up and saying, oh, so this is definitely going to happen. Now, there's, under Chapag Valley Middle High School, it just says "repairs to commence summer 2014." There's no qualification that that may or may not happen depending on how the vote goes. I think we probably could-
And it's just proposed, isn't it?
We could, I could go back to other things that I think are confusing in terms of the language. The purpose is to educate and inform. I'm not sure if it's doing that. I think we could spend $5,000 in a number of ways that would be much more productive.
Kelly?
If this board and the superintendent spends this money on this kind of a brochure, and later it is challenged and is brought to the state's attention, and let's say the referendum fails, would that be sufficient reason that we were advocating during the quiet period, if that would be found to be true, to have to rerun the same referendum again? And if so, I would say that we will need to, I think, ask for some resignations of people who are in our leadership positions. Because this is so important that we get this right, that we cross our Ts and dot our Is. And if we don't have this done legally, perfectly, so that there's no redo, there's no question about legality, because this is happening before with notices and other things. So, we need to really make sure that we're treading very carefully with this kind of material and the explanatory language, and that we are 115% sure that this can't be defeated in a request to the state for another look.
Jennifer?
Well, you know, I just hope that, in fact, this is brought to a legal scenario that you're saying, Kelly. I hope it's not, if it actually gets passed in the referendum, then all of a sudden, this is a lawful lawsuit. So, if you're going to say that, then it would be something I'd hope you do, whether it passes or whether it fails. That's all.
Allen?
Well, and the other thing, too, is, I guess we just have to double-check the S E E C, because we're talking about facts. And these are obviously all proposed. Now, if it passes, these proposals will become fact, but they're not without it. And my question is, on this one, a proposed site plan, there's a security booth, number eight? Where'd that come from? The Board of Education has never seen that security booth before. Is it there in order that people-
It's supposed to be a gate.
It says booth, so that actually-
The booth, in the booth, came into discussion.
So, the booth, I don't know when we put a booth there. We didn't vote on, the plans that we voted on didn't have a booth there. So, I guess we can add whatever we want in order to make this more inviting to be voted for. I, you know, we could add some equestrian fields and our own elementary swimming pool, and maybe some, you know, junior aviation, and I've just enjoyed some falconry. We might have a little hollyhopper. You see what I'm saying? Where did this come from? This is actually not, this is not real, this security booth.
People upset they've seen it?
Oh, good! Who are these people?
I'm sure one of these over here-
Did we vote on this?
It's part of the plan that we've been seeing and is also on Channel 17, and has been discussed and shown, and we have things here over and over and over.
It's right here, and it's not designated.
But you know what? The thing is, just like in a budget vote, we send the budget to people. We send the numbers.
Because we're not allowed to change the budget after-
And we're not changing anything here. The numbers are the numbers. The question is the question.
Where, where are the dog candles on here? She's added, we added a security, but there was none.
Okay. All right. We approved.
I'm trying to make the point that this is information disseminated in the mail. We've approved of this. Lawyers have approved of this. Turn on Channel 17. It runs continually. It's for the world to see. We're just making sure it's in people's hands. It's not advocacy. It's information. Since when, Mr. Brown, are you afraid of information?
When information hasn't been authorized by this Board of Education.
Oh, my God. We've done it-
Hold on.
Where did the security booth, the security booth come from?
There's a motion on the floor right now to approve this and this money to send it out, $5,190.
No one cares that we've added a security booth that we've never heard of before?
Parents will love it. Parents will love it.
Michelle?
The security booth was brought up several times in presentations. I don't remember if, if it was numbered. No, but they discussed it. We had actual conversations in public meetings with the security booth.
Yes. Where's the security booth?
I don't think any of the numbers were-
Who cares?
Who cares? You're actually-
All right. Allen, you brought it up. Can we move on?
There's a gate. There's a gate.
People are aware of the point.
Then these are facts that if they can be changed.
Once you have a building committee in place, they will work on the ed specs to tailor the school the way you would like it to be. Okay? That's the situation.
Is there anything further? There's a motion on the floor.
Why repeat the motion?
There's a motion, yes, Valerie has moved both to approve the brochure, the explanatory text, and posters, signs to inform the public, and to expend $5,150 to move them out, to mail them out, excuse me.
Do you have a second?
To prepare and mail them. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any approved, I'm sorry, any opposed? All right. Any abstentions?
Michael, how would you vote? Eight yes.
The motion passed?
Two no, and I have one abstained.
Two abstentions.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have the right vote?
Yes. Eight, two, and two.
All right. Thank you. The motion passes. All right. Number, item eight, opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. Someone who wants to address this? Yes, ma'am. Just come forward, state your name, and what's on your mind.
Carolyn Sawyer from Bridgewater. Just a couple notes, and then I have a thought. And a question to start. So, you said the S E E C already approved it. Do you know who you talked to at the S E E C? Pat?
I didn't talk to anyone.
Hold on. Hold on. This is an opportunity for the comment. Just, if you have a comment, you can comment.
Can someone tell us that information or get us that information?
If you have a comment you want to make without asking questions. She said she would get it to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Skip some of the explanatory stuff. So, at the beginning of the meeting this evening, you made a point to point out dramatic staff reductions if we were to merge Booth and Burnham in the fall, but there's no mention of the dramatic staff reductions that would occur if there was consolidated school, and the slashing of special ed services that we seem to be glossing over. Throughout this process, we've been told that this plan wouldn't save us any money, but all of a sudden, when we're losing staff, I think that implies we are saving money. So, you can't really have your cake and eat it, too. We are talking about facts, so let's keep them straight. There are five students at Burnham next year, not the number on this sheet as of today. And another fact that we, that was mentioned earlier this evening is that it's never been discussed, I guess it's not, in fact, I'm about to tell you it's not, that WPS has never been mentioned to close before. We actually discussed it from the start of the Long Range Planning Committee throughout the whole process, including I watched Michael Jackson vote for that option the first night we all met. If Washington votes yes, no on this plan, and I suspect they will, that's going to tell me that maybe they don't want to spend this money, but that maybe they are willing to merge in with Booth-Burnham Merge. And that would make the numbers that Pat is talking about even more favorable. To say Pat, or Dr. Costantino said this evening, that a consolidated school would cost much less than if we had to renovate Booth and Burnham, I don't think that that is a fact. In fact, that is pure conjecture at this point, as I can see no one's run anything having to do with that. I also want to talk about hot lunch, and while it might seem I also want to talk about hot lunch, and while it might seem minor, I corrected Ms. Anderson many times throughout the Long Range Planning Process that Burnham, in fact, does have a hot lunch program. It's self-sustaining and it costs the region no money.
Will that be cut short because of the motion that was passed tonight where they can't hand any food out from the faculty to the students?
Possibly.
No.
No?
Not a hot lunch program.
It's pizza.
I also just want to call to your attention that we can't double speak. So unfortunately, Ms. Anderson, you did say it would be insanity to contemplate closing WPS at the beginning of the evening, but then you also said enthusiastically, there are plans for that building. To me, that tells me that we should be looking at it, and it wouldn't be insanity.
Can I correct my statement?
Sure.
If consolidation happens, all three schools will close. In the event all three schools close, then the town fathers can decide what those buildings are going to look like, both Washington, Roxbury, and Bridgewater.
Okay, alright.
I never at any time, ever said that, oh yeah, let's close WPS and ship everyone to Bridgewater.
No, you're not. I'm saying not insanity.
They wouldn't be on the bus more than forty-five minutes.
Yeah, just one more thing, and I've gone back to sort of my piece of advice. Greg, you got the high school parents all riled up early on in this process when you told everyone that the sky was falling and these floors were crumbling underneath our feet. And people actually began to believe you. And when that happened, and then the administration backpedaled and say, oh no, we only need eight million dollars to fix this building, we all sort of knew that that wasn't true. And you kind of opened a can of worms, not with me, but with a lot of people in the community who seem to think, well, you know, if this building is the behemoth up on the hill that needs all this money because it is in fact crumbling under our feet, as you stated, then, you know, maybe we're looking in the wrong place. And then this evening, you did the same thing, saying that the sky was falling, that we've gone, we're going to go from twenty-six children, we're going to have a two-room schoolhouse, and then what, you know, the sky is going to fall again. I just think that we shouldn't be so dramatic when there are solutions out there that aren't going to cost us forty million dollars. So let's hope, eight days, we can all come back to the table.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
You don't.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie Stewart, I'm from Bridgewater. And early in the meeting, a lot of you talked about some of the knowns and unknowns. And so I just wanted to share a few of my knowns. First, and probably most importantly, that next Tuesday night, this referendum is going to fail. I know that. I've worked on campaigns in the town of Bridgewater since I was a senior here at Chappagh. And I would classify this one as easy peasy, which means it really hasn't been hard at all. And if you drive through the center of Bridgewater, you might get a sense of where I'm coming from. So, number one. Number two, I'm sort of disappointed that we're spending five thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars tonight on a brochure that is in fact advocacy. And I don't understand why the consolidation proponents did not form a PAC. SOS is a PAC. We can spend money during the quiet period and advocate for our position. I don't know if there's not enough enthusiasm out there to have formed a PAC, if no one wants to spend any money to form a PAC, but that would have been the correct way to advocate during the quiet period. In 1972, when I went to Burnham School, I had hot lunch. It was really good. And my children have been there in the last few years. They have hot lunch and they enjoy it too. So I just wanted to correct that as well. I also know that our test scores are at the top of the dirg. So for Mr. Cava to say that we are in an educational crisis, I find bizarre. And I hope that all of you would, again, drive through town and see the wonderful banner that recognizes our children and our administration and our teachers for that great accomplishment. I also know that there are solutions that don't require spending forty million and ten more in interest. There's solutions that would fix our problems. And the last thing I would like to say is that on Tuesday night, we're having a party. And I sincerely hope that some of you, if not all of you, will consider attending. And I hope we can put all of our differences aside and work on solutions that all three towns will accept. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
With the cupcakes.
If you'd like, we'll make special ones for you.
My name is Kim Lindemann. I have a kindergarten...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Would you say your name again?
Kim Lindemann. I live in Marble Dell. I just moved here two years ago. I have a kindergartner that started this year. My husband and I, I'm a statistic that you're talking about. My husband and I are currently renting a duplex and have a mortgage on the table that we've put on hold because we're starting our kindergartner in the Region 12 school system. And quite frankly, through town, it's just been nothing but a murmur and undertone of craziness as far as where the school system is going in this region. I also have just secured my daughter with three more children. One starting middle school, one in fifth grade, and one starting kindergarten in the Washington Primary School System. So within the last six months, my family has secured four new children in the school system, three of which aren't on your numbered rolls yet.
Awesome.
I'm just going to read some streams of thought that I put together because I thought it was interesting, what I was hearing around town. There seems to be three themes, running through recent articles, presented in the local papers, and peppered throughout personal conversation among our town residents. The first issue is that many feel that the superintendent and the regional board have not done a thorough job in getting all vital information necessary out to the public at large. To better inform myself regarding the vote, I went to the Region 12 website and I was able to review the entire plan. It includes all the information necessary to make an informed vote if you're an intelligent person. The website is the best medium for transferring large sums of data to the populace at large. It's also the least expensive medium. And I think the Board chose wisely to put all that information onto the website to save paper, ink, copy, and mailing fees. I went a step further after hearing more people's opinions about how you should vote yes or vote no. And I did see the banner and all the signs in Bridgewater, except to travel there to go to Sandy Hook to visit my parents. I met with Dr. Costantino to discuss the questions that I had. I received a meeting time with our superintendent within twenty-four hours of my call, and I was afforded ample time for my questions. Reading an article in the paper that stated a person did not receive in hand pertinent information that they needed to make a vote, at that meeting with Dr. Costantino, I personally handed any, I asked for information, I was personally handed that information in written form, in hand, on the spot, without her knowing what I was going to be asking for. So I was impressed that I could call the superintendent, get a meeting within twenty-four hours, state my questions, get my questions answered, and also ask for written information, by the way, that just supported what was on the website. But it was the reports, the budgets, the schools, the new school this repairs, and also Dr. Proud's report, which was interesting. The second issue, many feel that the superintendent and the regional board have not put forth a thorough investigation into the actual need for a new K-5 school, and not having a school within a town's border will drive the town's real estate down as people with young families will not move into the area. Not only is the Region 12 student population declining, but other regions and school systems surrounding our area are facing the same truth, that student population is decreasing in many areas throughout the state. Dr. Proud informs us in his report that Region 12's enrollment pattern is fairly similar to that of the state's public schools. He further states state enrollment declined by 5.4% between 2004 and 2013. In fact, other towns are making consolidation a serious consideration when looking at budget and costs for educating students with an alignment of population decline. You can read that article on Could Region 6 Merge with Litchfield Schools, as reported in The Spectrum on April 4th, 2014. It should not be a surprise to anyone that the need to close facilities and consolidate elementary schools is a problem faced by other school systems outside of Region 12. It is only with sorrowful acceptance that our superintendent has had no choice but to combine a kindergarten and first grade class because there are simply not enough students enrolled to validate separate grades. It seems that some residents and educators would like to reason against consolidation to keep their independent schools functioning on an extremely small student-to-teacher ratio. Their concern, it seems, is that consolidation would somehow lower student achievement level. However, any school in the state, even the lowest-ranking areas, would be at an advantage to secure a high academic achievement level if they were granted the low student-teacher ratio of Burnham Elementary. In fact, all three of our elementary schools currently rank within the state's top educational ratings. In fairness to all students within our region, combining our three schools into one efficient system is the best use of our educational and financial resources for the region and will only enhance our state student achievement scores. In fairness to our educators, our system is charged for addressing the needs of the whole child. This is not limited to state testing achievements, but also must address every child's individual need to be a part of a thriving classroom and school community. As someone who has recently moved into the region, I can assure you that it is more important for me to have a regional school where my child can attend a classroom of students of a healthy size, so that she can be part of a team at gym and at recess. It would be an asset to my daughter to attend a classroom where there would be enough students in her class to form a team for collaborative educational projects. I believe the social growth of the child is worth as much as the educational growth of the child. I believe our school community is required to see to it that they address the needs of the whole child. Consolidation will only serve to provide the best atmosphere to meet the circumstantial needs of each child. Further, when prospective buyers look to purchase a home in any of the three towns, I wonder if having a single elementary school in each town would matter as much as people claim it would. The merge of K and first grade at Burnham School and Bridgewater is likely to be only the first step in downsizing and combining grades as classroom enrollment continues to decline. In fact, I wonder if new residents to the area might look unfavorably on a town with a combined K and first grade as opposed to a regional school with a healthy student population level within each grade. It is definitely something to strongly consider before you cast your vote. And the final third issue I see is the budget for a new K-5 elementary school will skyrocket, people say, and taxes will go up by building a new school versus keeping the 318 buildings we now have. As far as taxes rising considerably due to consolidation, I don't see that borne out in the budget. The breakdown of the budget expenses is allocated by town, with Washington's taxpayers taking on the largest burden for the new school, and Bridgewater taking on the least amount. By consolidating our educational resources, we will actually save money over time through a decrease in teacher salaries, administration costs, maintenance fees, and overall fuel and electricity consumption. The budget put forth clearly confirms that the financial cost to taxpayers in all three towns will be small when compared with the continual rising costs of maintaining three separate elementary schools within this region. As other towns are looking to close schools, we in Region 12 have been given a blessing, if you choose to see the blessing. We have the opportunity to build a regional community elementary school, a beautiful green building from the ground up that also accounts for the security needs that we face today. Our children from all three towns already come together in our Reach Pre-K program and at the middle and high school levels. We are already consolidated. We have the opportunity to take a step in a new direction, hand in hand with our children. Making a choice to join our children together as a Region 12 Pre-K through 5 elementary school is a good thing. It is also a good thing to ask the parents and educators of the region to commit to join together as well. And I thank you for your time. I just have one more comment. I was really kind of disappointed sitting here tonight because I have been a member, a new member of a community with children coming in and a part of the school that I like. And I understand that Burnham and Booth Free are just as tight-knit as Washington Primary. So we all have a reason to hang on to each of our schools. But I've been a community member that's received these drafts and these printouts and SOS signs all over the place and the yay, our school is great. I'm receiving this stuff. I'm assuming that the Board is not coming together one week before a vote to people that have to sit down with a pen and make a mark and argue, argue, or agree about things that we already have. We're intelligent adults. You're not marketing to two-year-olds. You're marketing to adults that have some sort of intelligence, first of all, to choose the region to live in. There's a reason why we want to move here. Not just the beauty, not just your, you know, the average home price. It's the intelligence and the way your community as a region moves forward. Each school moves forward in a like direction, a good direction. It's disappointing to sit here and see squabbles over semantics of wording. If the lawyer put it in, the lawyer's done his job, I'm not saying he's infallible, but we're to a point where the vote needs to go to the people. I got the information that I needed. I've read the paper. I've been handed out brochures. I understand the question as written and presented without any change. I know what I'm voting for. Yes, to a new school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Karen's going up from Roxbury. I'm back again. I like heaven's voice. So, although I lose my voice every time I get up here, I have this horse thing. Just three quick points. I'm going to second what she said, listening to you guys today. The voters, unless you're living on our rock, we know what's going on. Really, we know. And we know all sides. We're not unintelligent. We have it, we get it, we've read it backwards, forwards, inside out. So I think you guys have to have a little faith in us. The second thing I just wanted to address was, I kind of want to talk to, again, my Roxbury reps and maybe the Bridgewater reps too, that, you know, I get that a lot of people feel that it's not going to pass. And I just have to say, my comment to that is, if it doesn't and we have to regroup, I really hope that, just like the vote's going to be thirty-three and a third, everybody's going to want to pay their thirty-three and a third when it comes time to keep your wishes. Because that's what would be fair. So, and I'm just going to wrap up with, I'm a yes, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, guys. Randy Tako, New Preston, Washington, over. Glad I'm not on that side of the table, but then, I actually wish I was on that side of the table because at least then I'd have a voice to stop when things get out of hand and maybe myself pick up that gavel. To listen to what happened tonight was unacceptable, sitting out here. You guys are grown adults. This has been going on for a long, long time, about coming together as a unified school system, about saving our accomplished region and not ripping it apart. Forty-seven years. Forty-seven years, my lifetime, there has been a region up here. And we became a regional school system to make education better for our children. For our children. We wanted to give them more. And we came together to give them more. Well, times have changed. People have changed. Our community makeup has changed. The laws have changed. The learning environment has changed. It is time for us to change and to adapt, to move forward. And again, it has to be about our children and their education. We're a regional school system, and our towns elect officials. But once we are elected officials of the Board of Education, you are elected officials, you are no longer an entity of your town. You are a member of the regional school system, and you think like a regional, and you are actually an entity of the state. You are no longer part of your town. You don't think as your town, you think as the region. That is your job. You got sworn in for that. That is your job. And that your job is to protect all of our children, not a select few that you deem need more. That is not your job. It is about the education of all of the kids. And this consolidated, which I know is everybody's a dirty word, we have been doing for forty-seven years up here. We have changed, we have adapted. This bringing an elementary school together and putting it in a different place, we have discussed that time and time again. I have been coming to board meetings since my daughter was three. She is now sixteen. I served on that side of the board to be heard, to get things moving forward. I was a big proponent for full-time kindergarten. Didn't get it on my, when I was up here begging for it, didn't get it. But finally, people caught on. Administrators caught on, board members caught on, and we got our kindergarteners what they deserved. We need to come together one more time to give our K through six what they deserve, and that's unity in community that is coming together up here. And it's about giving them the information. We talked about brochures tonight. We're going to hand those out to people to give the information. That information is what will happen if they vote yes. What will happen if this passes? We're not telling them to vote yes. We're saying, this is what's on the agenda, this is what you have to decide, just like you decide here tonight, and we move forward. I think we can. We are always better when we work together than we are arguing and fighting with each other. I have friends in Bridgewater. I don't look down on Bridgewater as being, you know, that big beating drum. I mean, they are, but I'm loud too. So, but I have friends in Bridgewater. My kids have friends in Bridgewater. I love our community. I almost bought in Bridgewater when I was looking. I knew I wanted the region. And this is before I had kids. I have been in this region for twenty-four years. I have maintained taxes in this region for twenty-four years. My daughter's only in tenth grade, so for eleven of that twenty-four years, I've been utilizing the school system. And I'm thankful every day that I'm here. Enough so much that I went on that other side of the table to share my passion and for the children. And I'm always about education. I've stated that more times than you've said. We are, you guys are the Board of Education, and it's about educating all our children. And by pulling them together up here at the Chappagh Campus with all of the safety in place, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third century technology because we're going to be moving forward, it's all here. But you guys have to start getting along, and you have to be a uniform front. And Valerie said it best. Once you guys adopt a vote, whether it passes eight-four, eight-three-one, eight-two-two, if... it becomes the board's vote. And you need to embrace it and move forward. And I know that's not easy when you disagree with what happened. But once it's done, it's done, and you move forward as a unit. This decisiveness has to stop. And the last thing I want to say before I sit down is, nobody knows until eight PM on the twenty-ninth how this vote is gonna go down. Nobody knows what someone is going to do on their ballot. We can think and hope and dream all we want, but my hope is that people will see the information that's out there, will step back and realize that it is about education, not about property values. We are the, you guys are the Board of Education. Region Twelve was together for education, and it is time that we put that first. And our citizens, our taxpayers, put that first, our children, not just today, but in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah. Mine's really short. I wrote in big print.
State your name again.
I'm Kristy Hardy from Roxbury. And I just wanted to let you guys know that myself and so many people in Roxbury are really for this consolidated elementary school. I'm confident in passing this referendum would be a positive change, not only for the children, who, as Franny mentioned, they are why we do what we do here, not only for the children, but for all of us. Having a state-of-the-art, modern school would draw in young families, which are seeking places elsewhere right now, obviously, with our enrollment being down. They're just not gonna settle here when we are in chaos. So continuing status quo and fighting, forever fighting this consolidation, which I know has been going on for years and years. I'm newer to the region, but I do have very good friends who have been here forever. And I know that this fight has continued a long time. It's time for something to change, and, you know, why not be today? Because if this continues, we're gonna get worse and worse. These kids are gonna be the ones to suffer, not us. We're just gonna not like each other. And, but the kids are the ones who are gonna suffer. So we really need to, I'm a yes, yes, also. And there are a lot of us, so.
Very much.
Yes, yes.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Paula Conway from Roxbury. I attended the informational session in Roxbury at the Senior Center a couple weeks ago. And Barbara Henry had presented some information that was put together by Gary Lord regarding taxes and the tax impact on Roxbury in particular. And I wanted to share that with you because I thought it was so important. I asked Gary if he could be here today, and he couldn't, but he said that he'd be more than happy if I could share the information. He is presenting it at the informational meeting tomorrow, and if you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. So he, um, you can look at it. He wrote a summary about what his spreadsheet is about, but it's not rocket science. It just takes, over the next year, it looks at when this project were to pass, starting in two thousand seventeen, what each year would look like and what we would save each year. So he took the status quo, and he took the consolidated numbers, how much we would save each year. And then from that, he took Roxbury's share of that. So, which is thirty-two point six nine percent. And then from that savings cost, he subtracted the maintenance cost, the electric, the oil, all those kinds of things, to come up with a net savings to Roxbury. And you could see in the first year that the building of operational, or the new consolidated schools operational, we would save five hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, which would be a five point three percent decrease in taxes. And he didn't go any further with that in regards to taxes. I think that's because, I think like someone said earlier, there's so many other components that go into our taxes other than the school budget. So by predicting further, it would, it just wouldn't be accurate. But he did give numbers in terms of dollar amount, what we would save each year. And there are some years that we would be at a loss. But because there's so much that we would save in prior years, we can save that money to offset those times. So in the end, after twenty years, it's estimated that our town would save over eight million dollars if we were to consolidate. And again, if you can read the summary, it might give more explanation as to what he did. But like I said, the numbers, it's not rocket science. He took the numbers, he was on a long-range committee, he took the numbers, I think, on the website. It's not rocket science. Also, at the meeting, you know, I was very encouraged to hear Barbara Henry have some really good ideas about the use of our buildings afterwards. We have some needs in Roxbury, space, we're very limited in space. That would be one thing. There are, you know, ideas for rec center and different things like that. So I was very encouraged to hear that our selectmen was open and willing to hear new ideas. And I think that as the Board of Education, and I think, you know, as a taxpayer, I understand why the selectmen didn't want you to figure out what was gonna happen to those buildings because that's not your decision. That's, as me as a taxpayer, that's my decision, what happens in my town. I don't want Bridgewater or Washington to determine what happens in my town. So I understand that. And I think people need to realize that and be realistic about that, that, you know, we can either, we can maintain our things, they don't have to be empty, we can use them for purposeful things, we can tear them down and build other great things. There's a lot of different things that we can do. I think just because we don't know what's going to happen doesn't mean that we should eliminate it altogether. I think there's a lot of great possibilities, and I think that there's a lot of people in town, I know at least in Roxbury, who have a lot of really good ideas, that it can actually enhance our town. Not only would we have a brand-new school in our region, but we would have a great new building that could maybe attract young families. So I think that when you guys talk about what's gonna happen to these buildings afterwards, I think it's, you know, not your concern, it's the town's concern. And as each town, we'll figure out what to do with that. But I think this is a good understanding, that if they were to stay just, you know, closed and just having to keep them empty but standing, that we would be saving money. So I think that, you know, saying that, oh, by having this empty building, it's gonna raise our taxes by ten percent, I think we need to stop with that talk. If we plan on building Taj Mahal, then yeah, our taxes might raise ten percent. But I don't think any of us are gonna probably approve that in each of our towns. So I think, again, we need to look at the facts and look at numbers and make our decisions and face our talk off of the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Linda Schneider from Roxbury. And I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of consolidation after everyone will information, the information. I just wanted to, the board on that. And I also think that at this time, that we're pretty fortunate to have Deborah Constantino experience to help us, guide us through that, since she's also had that experience in the past with renovations and building new. I think also, we're fortunate that we're in a time when we have low interest rates, and that's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of that. And just as an aside, as a voter and a resident of Roxbury, I'm a little bit embarrassed by tonight's meeting, especially by Ms. Lot, the way that your comments that you had addressed towards Dr. Constantino. And just, you know, just as voter, I'm just kinda shocked by that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would like to address several comments made about the board's conduct tonight and issues they thought were settled, and yet the board still negotiates. This is a board of twelve. They're elected folks. Issues come before this board, and they're debated and decided every day. That's what the board does. It's unfortunate, yes, maybe sometimes people thought something was settled, whatever it may be. The issues facing us now are different issues, but issues will come before the board, and the board will debate them and make decisions. That's what the board does. So, I'm sorry if it upset you both. Sometimes, when they say democracy is ugly or something. Is there anyone else? All right, and there's no executive session, there's a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those that voted say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.